All right, it is 9:00 AM. We will call the August 16th regular meeting of the Trinity County Board of Supervisors to order. Supervisor Dros and Jeff, do you want to lead us in the place?
Please do.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, presentations. Clear to the board, item 1.1, receive an update on fires currently burning in Trinity County.
Good morning. My name is Janine Sombey. I'm liaison officer with California Incident Management Team 11, a team that is currently managing lightning complex of fires. And I'd like to just start this morning by making some introductions for the fire folks that are here today. So we have a nice big room here to give you guys some information. We'll start off just with some introductions. So we have with us Chris Christopherson, who is our agency administrator in representing Ted McCarthy from the Six Rivers National Forest. We have Josh Ikammer, who is the Six Rivers Chief One. We have Chief Kirk McCray, who is the unit chief for the Humboldt Del Norte Unit for CAL FIRE. We have Sean O'Hara, who is the unit chief for the Shasta Trinity Unit for CAL FIRE. We have Alex McGrath, who is Deputy Fire Management Officer for the Shasta Trinity National Forest. We have Chris Fogel, who is the incident commander for our California Incident Management Team 11. We also have James Courtwright, who is our incident commander trainee, also for Team 11. We have Sam Maruk, who is our operations section chief. We have Kevin Osborne, who will be presenting both weather and fire behavior on behalf of Team 11. And we have -- that is who we have. Did I miss any of the introductions? All right. So we're going to just start off today with just a couple of words from Josh Ikammer, just introducing what we're doing here, and then we will move into the presentations. And after we do the presentations, we will also have time for questions directly after the presentations.
Well, good morning, everybody. We appreciate the invite here, and I look forward to listening, hearing any concerns you may have, and sharing what we know about our fire and what we're doing with it. So again, thanks for having us here, and I look forward to answering any questions that you have.
With that, we're going to go ahead and start off with an operational update. We've got a map over here, and that will be presented by Sam Maruk, our operations section chief.
Good afternoon, everybody. If you don't mind, I want to walk over the map and walk around the map as we go through the fire, the two fires we have. Operationally, we've had a lot of success over the past few days with the weather that's been fairly calm for us. A lot of resource opportunities, a lot of firefighters coming in. We've had a lot of struggle in getting a lot of help to do what we needed to do to keep the community safe. A lot of our focus at the beginning of this fire was to ensure that we were protecting all the infrastructure within the river corridors and outlying areas, identifying what was out there, what needed to be protected. A lot of collaboration with the sheriff's, law enforcement, the local forest service, CAL FIRE. We all got together, made a quick plan, decided what to do. Because of the numerous fires that had occurred a few number of days ago, the decision was to go semi indirect to contain these quickly, resources as they were coming in. There wasn't enough time to go direct on the small little fires that occurred across the south and north side and south side of the river. So the decision was to do a little indirect line, look for opportunities from old fire scars, those kind of just using fire paths, road systems, to speed up the ability to get around a lot of this. So these lines you see are planned areas. So our primary line is to go direct as much as we can. As close to the fire, keep the fire small. We also plan secondary and tertiary areas and look within those areas to see what needs to be done ahead in case the fires get passed our primary. Fortunately, we haven't had a lot of issues with the fire getting out ahead of us. We haven't had a lot of struggles in maintaining what we're doing. Right now, currently, we've got a good handle on a large portion of the Campbell Fire proper, the north side of the fire we call Branch One. Oh, I'm sorry. Test. Okay, thank you. Good hand on a large portion of the Campbell Fire, Branch One, as we call it. What's left to do is finish a little bit of burning in Cedar Creek in this area. We've got a pretty good handle on what's going on in here, but we want to secure this little corner here. The rest of the interior, all these little open areas that you see are just from the old burn show, the fires burning together and it's going to close up. The fire is actually doing a really good job for the forest. It's a nice kind of story burn for the most part. Not a lot of damage to the resources within the fire perimeter, so we're very happy about that, especially when the winter comes. I don't see a lot of issues with effects to the water quality as we go into the wintertime. Concurrently, while we're focused on putting the fire out here, we're also developing control features to protect the fire if it did get out or spot out. It won't spread into the Hoopalands, into neighboring forests, and along the southern end of the river. So we're confident that we're going to be holding this, but we're, just in case, we're putting up some contingency lines to be a catcher's net, or if another fire serves somewhere along the way. Fortunately, we have a lot of burn scar along here, as you all know, so that could be a tertiary, or any fire spreading into the wilderness. Don't want fires in the wilderness, so we're pretty confident about that, too. On the south side of the river, working alongside of CAL FIRE, we've been focused on finishing out our, using our firing techniques to contain the fire within some of our control lines. There's a little bit of work left to do down in the corner, southeast corner of the fire, southeast corner of the fire and the eastern side. The rest of it's getting boxed in pretty well. Concurrently, the CAL FIRE, we're opening up the one road to, like, the shaded fuel break in case the fire decides to spread out to the west. We don't anticipate that happening, and a lot of our fire brigade analysts explain why, but just in case. We do have some opportunities to catch it farther out. I don't anticipate that happening. Any questions for me? I appreciate your time. Thank you.
We're going to have a presentation from Kevin Osborne, who's going to present on current fire weather and fire behavior.
Hi, good morning. I'll stand here by the map as well. Starting with fire weather, over the last week or so, pretty much the entire time that the management team has had control of this fire, we've had really strong inversions and lots of smoke cover over the fire. Strong inversions and smoke cover really limit fire behavior, and that's really beneficial for us in going after control efforts. So having that limited fire behavior, where the majority of the fire is moving through backing and flanking and kind of a creeping spread aided by rolling material going down the hill and spreading the fire a little bit, that's allowed the fire to both bump into our control features and has also allowed us to utilize tactical firing operations around some of the perimeters and have low intensity fire that has low severity effects to the vegetation, and it presents us control opportunities where we don't have a lot of spotting and we're really successful. So that's been the case for the last week or longer on this fire. So those smoke inversions, though they're difficult on the public, and they're difficult for all of us in camp and for folks here in Leaverville and all along the river corridor, that strong smoke inversion has been very beneficial for both the fire effects in the interior of the fire and for control efforts. Starting today, we're going to see a little bit of a lifting of that inversion. We're going to get more mixing in the atmosphere, just going to allow smoke to rise up higher, a little more clean air will come into the fire. So that's good for us and the public for breathing purposes and visibility, but it can be a negative for fire behavior. We're expecting an increase in fire behavior today, and then again tomorrow as that instability builds in. We do have a chance of thunderstorms tomorrow as well. I think everyone around here understands that thunderstorms, one, bring the potential for new fires, but also the potential for erratic gusty winds, which can really challenge our control efforts. So this is something we've been tracking as the models have gone up and down on how much we're expecting those thunderstorms to impact us. And even if we don't have thunderstorms, the cleaner air and instability will allow our fire to become more active tomorrow. Tomorrow's going to be our biggest test on this fire. Luckily, we have had over a week of that really good weather that's allowed us to gain a lot of good ground on this fire. So there's not a lot of places around the perimeter of the fire where we expect to be challenged, even with the challenging weather that we're going to have today and tomorrow. There's a couple places that still have heat. You know, here down in the southwest corner, this western flank and this eastern flank, you can see a lot of that is on the southern, what is now the Ammon Fire. And then on the north branch, on the Campbell Fire, our main area of concern is here in Cedar Creek, where we do still have some open line. But we have control features all the way tied into Cedar Creek on the north and south sides of that. So it's boxed in, and we don't anticipate that being a problem, but there is always potential when we have places that still have heat and we don't have full containment or control lines around the fire. The public will still see interior consumption, both from the north and south branches. That consumption is going to be a little more aggressive in the coming days because of that instability, that increase in fire behavior. So there will be very visible smoke coming from this fire in the next two days. It will look more, it'll look scarier than it is. We do have the possibility of spotting outside our control features with the weather that we have. That instability allows greater loft, greater lift of the embers. So there is a possibility for spotting, but with our good control features, that is still a low possibility. We're feeling really comfortable with it. But we have seen an increase in the spotting distances already yesterday. We expect that potential to exist today. So our folks have been briefed on that possibility. They're on high alert for it. And we're going to be doing everything we can to get on those spots right away. We have lots of resources available, so we're keeping an eye on all those things, and we anticipate success, but we're prepared should things start challenging us. Are there any questions? All right, thank you.
So next, we're going to have James Courtwright, our incident commander trainee, and he's going to be talking a little bit more about also some repopulation issues as well as some other things.
Yes, so thanks for having us here. We appreciate it. We took the fire on August 8th, and so today is day nine. And as you can see, we've done some really good work. We've been in unified command, CAL FIRE, Trinity County Sheriff, Humboldt County Sheriff, and then California Highway Patrol. We've been working really well together. And as you can see, the fire footprint is staying within our primary lines. Actually, some places we're going even closer and tighter in on the fire. So this has been really successful from a fire suppression standpoint. We've certainly heard the concerns of the public in the area from Trinity County, Shasta County, Humboldt County. And our focus is 100% suppression and try and keep these fires as small as possible. We're very sensitive to the fact that the communities have dealt with a lot of large fire over the past few years, and then we want to try and limit that as much as possible. So we're working on that, and working on that in a unified effort. Along the river corridor, most of those areas, Hawkins Bar, Salier, Willow Creek, we're repopulating those areas now, and repopulation is almost complete in some of those areas. So it's looking good. We're here to answer any questions that you might have. I know you have some concerns, and we would like to address those if you have questions. Thanks.
Great. We're going to go ahead and follow that with Chief Kirk McCray, who's the unit chief for the Humboldt Del Norte Unit for CAL FIRE.
Appreciate your time. Really, the point I want to make today is the cooperation and effort that has been made forward here with the Six Rivers National Forest, incident commander Fogel's team, which I appreciate their aggressive attack, as well as the cooperation from the Trinity County Sheriff's Department, Sheriff Saxon, his staff in Trinity County, OES, myself and Chief O'Hara available here for any questions you may have. Thank you.
Chief O'Hara, did you want? So we're going to go ahead and follow that with some comments from Chris Christopherson, who is the agency administrator representing the fire right now.
So my thunder was just stolen by the last two speakers, and so, but, you know, just to emphasize, we recognize that this is a tremendous impact to the community in the area. Smoke is awful. It affects our way of life, health, the economic engine in this area, whether it's recreation or timber management. And so we are trying to get this put out as soon as possible. We talked about the beneficial weather that we've had and our ability to quickly get primary suppression lines in place on this fire, and we've been very effective. And those lines are going to be challenged in the next two days. We pointed out that there are some other colored lines that represent alternative lines that we're using from past fires, and that is the just in case. And so we are building our plan just in case, and we're working to get this put out as soon as possible. And the successes that we have seen has been a result of great community support, agency cooperation from CAL FIRE, the local sheriff in CAL OES. And so for that, we are very thankful and thankful that we've got Commander Fogel and his team up here helping manage this. This has been our rough last five years in the North State. I'm a local. I've been dealing with this as well as have many of the people in this room, and so we recognize just the collective impact when we see smoke in the air. So we take that personally, and we're working to get this put to bed. The last piece is we're going to shortly be working on a restoration repair plan for this fire to make sure that, you know, all of the important resources in this area are protected, and we get the black logs out before they come down, we get them to the mills before the bugs chew them up, and so we can then recoup some of the economic damage from this fire. And so with that, thank you for this opportunity, and we're looking for ways to, you know, grow the partnership between Trinity County and the Six Rivers National Forest, Trinity National Forest, so please give us real-time feedback on how we can do that. Thank you.
Lastly, we just wanted to open it up for any additional questions that you might have about fire or fire behavior, the weather, anything?
I have a question, if I could. You said that you will work on a restoration plan to get black logs out and logs to the mill before bugs hit in. What do you picture will be different this time than perhaps we have experienced in the past?
So if you're referencing past efforts that haven't gotten material out in a timely fashion, ideally, we're all learning from mistakes as we go. And so we have some newer tools, planning tools, to expedite the removal of logs, especially if they are right adjacent to facilities, private property, and the roadside. And so we can do that work under what's called the P code, so emergency response, that expedites that work. And so that will be utilized. There's also an emergency tool that we have that the Washington office is sharing with us, and so we'll be looking into that as well.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have some. So just the general, Team 11, what type of team are you, a one or a two?
So right now, we're a type-two team, but our incident commander is qualified as type-one incident commander. We've also brought in an EMO, a national type-one team that's shadowing our team because all the teams are transitioning to type-one status. And so a lot of our folks that are on our team already have that qualification, and so we're bringing all the teams up to speed with that qualification.
So just a general question, the type-one teams, when do they anticipate everyone's to be? Is that next year or?
I believe that all the teams are transitioning by 2024.
Okay, thank you. Next question, on the news this morning, I heard that there was 15% containment, but I went and looked at that map, I see it looks a lot more than 15% containment.
Yeah, so we'll run the numbers again tonight and see where we're at after a GIS exercise of what our containment is. It will be ticking up here. There are some areas that we want to get through this the next two days with the adverse weather, and then as we come out of that Thursday, Friday, the containment's definitely going to start coming up.
And in the next two days, we heard that we're going to have more wind vents. Do you have planned firing operations, or are you just going to do that as needed?
So there's firing operations that are going to take place today. As we go into tomorrow and the next day, those will continue or not, depending on the conditions and the fire behavior that they're experiencing out there on the line.
And if, this southern fire seems to be a little more problematic, if it breaks out in the next couple of days, do you plan to do firing all the way to the line, your contingency lines, or will you wait for it to creep up?
I'll let Sam take that question.
Thank you for that question. It really depends where the fire escapes our containment line, what we do. We have several interior lines that we can take advantage of also to continue to keep that fire small. We don't necessarily need to drop back to our secondary contingency lines as a whole. So portions, depending on where the fire's challenging us, we may be able to grab onto roads or control features and keep them small. That's our intent, is to keep it as small as we can and try to get away with this without causing a lot of damage at all.
All right. And if you hold where your plans are, that you sound confident, how many acres do we have that number, would that approximately be?
So I believe in our decision document, 25,000 is the number there, but we're anticipating to be much smaller than that.
Well, you're 21 now, so that's good news then.
Yes.
Okay. And so from a weather standpoint, the next 48 hours seems to be kind of critical, and then if we hold to that, then we have a pretty good confidence level, is that what we're saying?
Yeah, we're going to drop back into the kind of a similar weather pattern we've had over the past week, is what my understanding is. Yes, Kevin's shaking his head, yes. So yeah, so really, Wednesday is the big day, a lot of instability, threat of thunderstorms. We'll see if we get new fires, and we'll see what that does to the fire on some of the corners on that southern fire, and then that upper section in Cedar Creek. But right now, we feel like we have a really good handle on it.
And then my last question, when do you guys rotate out and the next team comes in?
So the forest is working on the next team to come behind us. There's still, even though we're going to get some good containment and lines around the fire, there's still a lot of work to do to clean up and hopefully wrap it up and hand it back to the forest, but we'll see where we go here into the future.
Do we know which team that is? It's kind of sad that we actually know the teams now.
Yeah. They did do the new complexity analysis, and I do know that the forest has placed an order for the next team to come in behind us. Tentatively, if we, our plan is that we'll start transitioning on Friday with another team. We'll be departing on Sunday, then that next team will pick up the fire either Saturday night or Sunday morning.
Okay. And I want to thank Team 11 and everybody's help and the sheriff's department for working on this, and it sounds like good news, so it's, hopefully it stays the same. Thank you guys very much.
Yeah, we appreciate it, and we're proud to serve you guys. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Josh. Thanks. All right. Public comment. I almost skipped it. This time is for information from the public on matters not appearing on this agenda or within the consent calendar. All comments are limited to three minutes and must pertain to matters within the jurisdiction of this board. When addressing the board, please state your name for the record and address the board as a whole through the chair. No action or discussion will be conducted on matters not listed on the agenda. However, the chair may refer the subject matter to the appropriate department for follow-up or schedule a matter on subsequent board agenda. Any public comment?
Chris Williams, Leaverville. I would like to thank the board. Due to its oversight of our cannabis program, my days have a lot of extra time in them, allowing me to participate more fully in the democratic process and cultivate an attitude of gratitude. 168 days ago, our cannabis program has promised meaningful change. Since the arrival of our new cannabis director, under 30 licenses have been issued. That's like .148 each day. 300 more to go, and at this rate, we'll get there at 1,680 days. That's four years. The 168 days have created some meaningful change. A wall was built between the cannabis division employees and the people it serves, and walls are great for open communication and transparent processes. SEQA is incredibly important, and I'm thankful that our state has huge environmental protections in place for people breaking new ground. I get that reviewing these lengthy documents takes expertise and time, but this pacing feels punitive, and SEQA is not a punishment. I get it, SEQA documents were written in CRAN, the cannabis division director doesn't do Fridays, biologists and archaeologists are unqualified professionals. You lost the document. In incompetence blooms creative excuse-making. While hundreds of businesses are struggling, our county division director has maintained a steady paycheck, 10K-ish a month for five months, for 50K, you don't have to be public, you're allowed to lose your temper, you find new hurdles for 100 people to jump through until they collapse, minimal reporting duties to your superiors, and answer emails at your discretion. Sounds like a great gig. And it's not the lack of staff, it's the lack of leadership, the ability to prioritize, resolve problems, and build community trust. Soon it will be 365 days since the cannabis program halted to do a lawsuit. Some of you fought really hard to support. And two years since the cannabis division unofficially halted issuing licenses because of the threat of the lawsuit. This saved the board hundreds of hours having to decide what to do with the millions of dollars of cannabis tax revenue. Someone once said that you can't be fast and right, but if you can swiftly vote to amend an ordinance because two people believe the presence of a processing building less than 600 feet from their church will bring eternal damnation, or if the board can create a new opt-out zone, skipping over land use findings, I have faith that the board can find, ask questions, expedite processes, hold people accountable for their inaction and excuses, and listen to your constituents, all of them, myself included. With the smallest amount of consideration for our community at large, you can turn the cannabis division into something we can be proud of. In hopes, it is a chance to build better, better roads, better employment, better education opportunities, better wildlife management, wildfire management, better housing, better salaries for staff, and a better chance to thrive in our beautiful Trinity County. Thank you very much.
Good morning, board. Brian Gosman, Hayfork. I also own the Mountain Cannabis Company. We are number 18 in this program. This program was created by the people of Trinity County as well as the Board of Supervisors. As the sitting board, it is your duty to uphold this program, protect the aspects of this program, defend the program, and fight for this program. The residents of Trinity County, the cannabis farmers of this county, developed and voted for a tax in a community that is overwhelmingly against more taxes. It is very obvious that the economic gains from our legal cannabis program have not only benefited this county, but shown that together, you and the Board of Supervisors and the residents can think tank and provide for our common welfare. It is the duty of this board It is the duty of this board to not only protect our county from outside impacts that may not be in our best interest, but to protect the physical well-being of this county. You are failing, and it is obvious, and it is bizarre. So you got sued by a group of local elitists who don't like what you're doing. Welcome to America. So you adjusted to the will of the Trinity Action Alliance, you added some new hurdles to the program, seemingly to derail it, weaponizing the California Environmental Quality Act against farming. Baffling move. But you seem to have purposely slowed your attempts to keep your side of this bargain. What is going on? A grocery store in Hayfork is closing. Northern Delight's coffee house and venue is closed. This is not bad business practice. This is because the Board of Supervisors is making it impossible for us to conduct business. You are personally interfering in legal cannabis commerce granted to us by not only yourselves, but the state of California. You have pulled the rug from under many small family businesses in Trinity County. Your cannabis director constantly dances around the hardships of his position while doing his best to please each one of you so you may dismiss him until the next meeting, where there's once again, he will not be held accountable. Maybe he should crown himself a dunce cap. Better yet, relieve him of his position he can clearly not accomplish. The Trinity County Board of Supervisors is acting in a careless and callous manner. Why are cannabis licenses not being issued? Please tell us the truth. We don't want to hear any more excuses.
My name is Steve Lyon, Junction City. I know you guys have heard a lot of this before. It's beyond a crisis at this point. It's mid-August. I hope that a lot of folks, I don't want to blame bad intentions. I believe in the goodness of people, but y'all need to look around at this community, at these farmers, and look them in the eye. It's getting late, the season's, if you're not planted by now, you're done. I don't know many farmers that can fallow for a whole year in this environment, especially with the most expensive farming that I've ever heard of. I don't know anybody, any other farming industry that has so much expense, just to plant a quarter acre. The problem is a bureaucratic problem. It is not a problem with my farming practices, it is not a problem with our product. The problem is a bureaucratic problem. It comes from this county. None of us are really experiencing problems at the state level. The problem, in fact, there's a lot of people who still have valid state licenses, no county license. The problem is at the county. I know there's the solutions. I don't know if we know what the solutions are right now, but there's a lot of people who come to ad-hocs, who have offered up solutions that get ignored. We get told, we'll work on this, we'll look into this, and it's just delay after delay after delay. I hope that this county takes responsibility for what they're doing. This is a county bureaucratic issue. Things at the cannabis department are grind, have ground to a standstill. Licenses are not being noticed. We're hearing about licenses on desks that are just sitting there waiting. There were hundreds and hundreds of emails that just got ignored. This is a mess, and it's a tragedy at this point.
Hello, Jeff Godella-Zenia. I've been part of this program since the beginning, license number nine. A lot of roadblocks at the county on the way up here. It started with Tommy Morgenfall at the Building Department, lying to people. I watched her do it. I bit my tongue. She tried it with me, I corrected her, she moved on because she knew she felt she wasn't going to win that argument. After that point, I lost all respect for her, and I just started talking to Rick Tippett because he was much more straightforward and a little better informed. I can't stand liars. Can't stand it. I don't put up with it. That's why I bypassed her. I CC'd her on the email so she knows what we were talking about, but I couldn't deal with her after that. After her came Wesley Hubbard. She was great. She had memorial resources, she was crammed into that Building Department, didn't have the staff that there is now, but she always returned emails, and she was slammed with It's a shame we lost her. After that was Kim Hunter. Always remained professional, always returned emails. Took a little too much time with that transition plan. I feel you guys didn't hold her accountable and give her a realistic deadline, but at least she'd had something, and she was always professional with people, always returned her emails, even if she didn't have anything, any updates to say. After that was Lisa Lozier, who sat on her hands, did absolutely nothing, made it quite clear she wanted nothing to do with cannabis, and we went nowhere during her tenure. But she was always professional, she didn't always return emails, but sometimes she would acknowledge that she got the email. Which brings us to Sean Connell. We all had high hopes. All we need is a facilitator to facilitate this program, and he's been an absolute obstruction. For some reason, he will not meet with the consultants in this county who act as hubs to the rest of the growers. I mean, two consultants in this county represent a majority of the growers. He could talk to two people, and that information could disseminate from there, but he refuses to. And I'm not going to talk about the reasons I think why, but I think those reasons have followed him from mendicino. He's got some issues. The lack of communication, just, it acts as a roadblock. If you can't disseminate information, how do we smooth out this bumpy road? It's an absolute failure of a director of any department. I get returned emails from everybody in this county eventually. I mean, everybody's slammed, it takes a week or two, but I've gotten zero returned emails from him. Zero. I gave up. And I think a lot of, I think a lot of you want that, and that's messed up. We paid a lot of money to do this, and you pay a lot of money to him.
Your time's up.
Hi, my name is Pasha. I'm from the Cayman Prince's Garden, coming from the monk communities, on behalf of the monk community. We are, this is not acceptable. There have to be better ways to handle these applications. We need process and steps to make sure all of this have a smooth flow, because it seems like nobody's on top of the directors and nothing's been done. It's more than five months now, there's only less than 30 applications have been noticed. What have the Board of Supervisors been doing to be on top of this, to make sure this has been done? Everybody is paying taxes like everybody else, and we need these to be moving. As of right now, this is not acceptable result, and this need to be done. We are here to demand for an answer. We're here to demand for a process that need to be followed, and please look into that. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'd like to reserve my time for after Zoom.
Do we have anyone on Zoom?
Jay Borb?
Yes, I'm here, just a second. Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, good morning, Chairman Crazor and members of the board, John Ward Ball from Liverdale. I want to comment on the $3.3 million cannabis grant the county received from the state. The purpose was to assist the county in processing cannabis licenses. The grant requires the county to provide periodic progress reports. The first report was due yesterday and covered the period from January to June. I'm requesting that the progress report be posted on the cannabis department website. While the update at the last meeting was informative, the progress report covers some fairly important areas. The one I want to emphasize is it requires licensing metrics. In other words, between now and the end of the year, what is in the report about how many licenses will be issued? So if you could make that information available, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Next, we have Olivia.
Hello, it's actually Chief Professor Chris from Hayfork. I'm not going to talk about cannabis because I think that there are probably 65 people on Zoom that are going to touch on every point that I could ever want to say. What I did want to talk about is some of the stuff that Brian Gosman touched on a little bit, where businesses are shutting down, and I think it's gotten worse than that. Our county has gotten to a point under the direction of this board and the previous board that we are not able, and I say we, it's the county, is not able to provide some of these fundamental services that are supposed to be insured to its residents. I tried to go to the transfer station today in Hayfork with a load of trash, doing my duty to keep my property clean, and I was turned away from the dump because I did not have a valid dump card. The dump card that I received a week or two ago in the mail expired in June. We are not even able to operate the most basic services in this county. So I'm not surprised that we can't operate a new program. We need to take a step back, and we need to make some real hard decisions about how we can get from literally last place to state. We are officially now the poorest county in the state of California. How are we going to move forward to get maybe back to second to last? You know, that would be an improvement. I hope that somebody, I can't expect everybody to, but I hope that somebody wakes up and starts shaking this thing up, and lets people go to work, and lets people provide for this community. Thank you.
Next, we have Adrian.
Good morning, Chair and supervisors. Thank you for the opportunity to comment. First, I want to thank all the presentations from the fire crews in Downriver, doing just a stellar job there. Kind of, it shows what teamwork and cooperation can do. We can do some more of that here broadly in the county. I'm going to touch on some of the economic impacts, because I've come to realize that there really isn't any real sympathy for any of us as individuals, but I would hope that the Board of Supervisors can uphold their duty to fulfill their mission statement around the economic requirements of your positions. Yeah, Northern Delight's health food store here in Hayfork, it used to be called Zion, it's been here since I first moved here. So back even when Hayfork was extremely poor, before cannabis, this store existed. It was small, it's expanded, it was a wonderful store, they're going out of business. Northern Delight's coffee shop that brought some of the best touring musical acts to Trinity County, specifically to Hayfork, over the last number of years, they're closed for good, and nobody sees them reopening. We need to shift our resources in planning to completing analysis of these documents. There's been quite a number of inspections, I would suggest, and these are all comments that have been made repeatedly at the Ad-Hoc Committee for however long, seems like forever. There needs to be better communication with applicants still, it's still never happened. It's weeks and weeks and weeks, or even months, to get an email returned. And probably most importantly, this entire licensing system is conditional, it's required by state statute that licenses are conditioned. That's what the whole SEQA component is about. Our licenses previously were conditioned, and it would be extremely helpful to continue on and create compliance agreements between cultivators and the county that present firm timelines for progress, for open permits, for, geez, just all the different things that are involved there. I'm going to get back to the numbers for just a second. I'm assuming there would be about 100 licenses in Hayfork if they were being issued and people were operating. If each one of those licenses just profited enough to keep a family alive, profited $50,000, that's $5 million that's not in Hayfork, that's not in Trinity County, and you can tell, it's going back, I mean, you can drive through Hayfork in the afternoons, and there's not a car, there's nothing. The businesses are closing, the ones that are open are struggling really badly. The county does have the ability to solve this problem, and I would like the supervisors to direct staff to implement many, many, many of the comments and creative solutionary suggestions made here and at the Ad-Hoc Committee, and start getting these licenses out. Thank you.
Next, we have Veronica.
Good morning, Veronica Kelly Alby, Douglas City. I would like to start with, I want to thank the staff of the county for all that they have to take from the community, especially in the cannabis industry, both from cannabis industry and non-cannabis industry. I think that Director Connell walked into a very difficult situation, and it's interesting to me, and I've been following this process and participating for at least five years, and five, you know, four to five years ago, we were saying the same things about Rick Tippett, that he wasn't following the ordinances, wasn't following the laws, and it just continued to create this tension and this horrible situation between neighbors and residents within Trinity County. I continue to watch the meetings where Director Connell gets up and is, I think, one of the most transparent directors we've seen in a while, that discusses the good, the bad, and the ugly. And from what I've heard him say and what I've seen, he is doing the job of upholding our ordinances, following our county's rules, and helping the cannabis industry to be successful, because nobody, like he said before, will be able to challenge these licenses. And that's the ultimate goal. Have them in place, and offer them successfully. So I thank Director Connell and his staff for all that they are having to deal with. I think every employee in every division should be held accountable, because that's what we all do in a work environment. But to pin it on one person after so much turmoil over the last several years since the inception of all of this, I think is a lot of frustration, and I understand that. But I want to say to the staff of the cannabis industry, the Planning Department, Environmental Health, all of them, DOT, thank you for doing your best to serve all of the residents of Trinity County. You're following the laws, or they should be, and following the ordinances, and sometimes it's not popular. I know I've been disappointed by things and frustrated, and I watched people leave this county that were not in the industry because they felt things weren't ever going to change. So this fence has a lot of similarities on both sides. But Director Connell and his staff, keep working hard, keep doing what you're doing to make these licenses defendable and successful. Thank you.
Next, we have Patrick.
Hi, my name is Patrick. I'm a license holder, well, I'm a state license holder and a pending county license holder, and I was one of the first licenses to get issued. I was able to carry a license since 2016 until this year. I'm a firm believer in hard work and fair play, and...
And sometimes it's not popular. I know I've been disappointed by things and frustrated. And I watched people leave this county that were not in the industry because they felt things weren't ever going to change. So this fence is, has a lot of similarities on both sides. But Director Connel and his staff, keep working hard. Keep doing what you're doing to make these licenses defendable and successful. Thank you.
Next, we have Patrick.
Hi, my name is Patrick. I'm with, I'm a license holder. Well, I'm a state license holder and a pending county license holder. And I was one of the first licenses to get issued. I was able to carry a license since 2016 until this year. I'm a firm believer in hard work and fair play. And I used to think that because I was on a TPC property and I was able to garner a license in Trinity County, that if I could get a license, that meant it was possible that just about anyone could get a license. Unfortunately, I don't have a county license. I was able to get my CUP through the planners and I was very happy to get a unanimous decision to approve my project. It's been over a month since then and I still don't know what exactly is needed to get my license approved. Did, and I, I just want to, I just want to know, did you guys hear that? Like if I, a TPC license holder who's held a license in good position, an annual license with the state every year since this, since the county hasn't allowed that, got a license. Now I've gone through three and a half years to get to the plant, to the planning department and I got it agendized and I got it approved. There's a lot of nuances to all of this, but lack of communication and giving me the information in a timely way to do the work is extremely frustrating and excruciating. And unfortunately leaves me in the position to say, I went from if I can get a license, I believe that there's a chance for fair play and anybody can get a license, to, I don't know that I believe that anymore. If I can get a license with a CUP in a timely way, I don't need to break ground. I have permitted structures. I am compliant. Sure, there are always, there's always a little bit of work here and there to do. But if you can't get communication, if you can't get a return email from the department head saying, hey, this is exactly what's lacking. I get it. We're all new and, and staff has been really excellent to me when I deal with them, when I get a chance to deal with them one-on-one, like at the planning meeting, where we got together and we got a unanimous decision. That's unheard of in Trinity County in the cannabis program and I'm proud of that. And that's one of the reasons I'm still here, is because I want to see something equitable come out of all this work. The cannabis industry is extremely challenging right now. And to have Trinity County ju- just a straight-up feel like, just a straight-up roadblock is disappointing. So that's just my comment and I just hope for a brighter day and everyone to be safe in the fires. Thank you firefighters.
Next, we have SD iPhone.
Steve DeMarco, Hayfork. So I just want to bring it to the attention of the board that Humboldt County received $12 million in a grant from the state of California for water storage and renewable energy improvements. So cannabis cultivators in Humboldt can receive $60,000 each for water storage and $30,000 each for renewable energy projects, energy upgrades. So why haven't you done this, right? You could copy Humboldt's ordinance, word for word if you had to, and probably pass this in a week. I don't know why you aren't able to do what Humboldt is able to do, right? Because they're saving their cultivators money. They got a grant from the state, a generous grant for water storage. And considering drought conditions, fire issues, this seems like the lowest possible hanging fruit that you could accomplish. Free money going to an industry that is being drowned and suffocated. It just, it bewilders the mind. So please, to the board, I'm sure there are five of you, yeah? I'm sure one of you can Google this. You can look on kentcamp.com or you can call Board of Supes in Humboldt and figure this shit out. As for the current kerfuffle with the program, it should be pretty clear to you guys at this point that whatever's going on there, okay? Shift's not getting done, right? So if you own a vineyard and someone kills all your grape, you're going to find someone else to run the vineyard, right? If you own a farm and, you know, all your, your product is subpar, you're going to find someone else to operate that. If you have 20 licenses issued in nine months, you gotta get, you gotta get on top of it, right? Because Rome is burning, right? So you, you, we got a lost year here, everybody. It sucks because a lot of people in ancillary businesses to cannabis are, are going, are already out of business. And the ones that are surviving, local ones, are just hanging on. So you guys need to be concerned about next year. Because if this year is bad, if these, if you got 50 licenses issued by next August, this is going to be economic Armageddon. You guys are probably going to be investigated by the state because that level of malfeasance is, you know, preposterous and also like wholly unacceptable. So I mean, all five of you should be making this a priority every day, okay? All day to make sure that the things are getting done, okay? If you have to do whatever, I mean, there has to be some buy-in from you guys because like this whole county is, is, it's just, families are starving, literally. So come on, people. Get with it, right?
Okay, next, we have Matt.
Hello, Chairman and Board. This is Matthew Jefferson from Coffee Free. So I'm still going to talk about cannabis, but I just kind of, I'm going to go off that I haven't asked for the board as a local cultivator. I'm like super struggling with the prices and profit margin right now of this product. And Humboldt County has this thing called Project Trailers. The county Humboldt Cannabis Business Micro Grant Marketing and Local Equity Program, commonly referred to as Project Trailers, is a trail raising support initiative for the county's cannabis industry. The three-tiered program was developed on the deal of California's legalization of recreational cannabis to provide business resources to cannabis businesses who otherwise wouldn't have access due to vendor restrictions. The program's three levels of support are Cannabis Business Micro Grant Program, a Local Equity Program, and a Marketing and Promotion Program. The Cannabis Business Micro Grant Program diverts the county's Measure S, which is their county cannabis tax funding, and provides cannabis businesses an opportunity to apply their funding to cannabis-related expenditures. It goes on, I don't want to like go on forever, but this is like a grant program. It's really, really helpful. I really need to build a nice greenhouse if I snow, and I'm like super inhibited financially and if I'm spinning off into something else. But if the board could look into something like Project Trailers for local cultivators, it could really help us like be able to compete in this industry with such zero profit margin. But thank you, guys. Have a good day.
Next, we have LM.
I apologize. Can you guys hear me all right?
Yes.
All right, perfect. I just wanted to ask a quick question of the board. Obviously, you can't respond, but over the last few weeks during AdHoc, during BLS, there's been quite a few different numbers thrown out of how many applicator, how many licenses that's on, have been approved and are actually operating. Last week, we heard about 24 and now we're hearing less than 30 or around 20. But if you go through the newspaper, only 19 have actually been noticed. So if the board and planning could provide some true clarity on that, that would be very much appreciated.
Okay, next, we have Brian.
Good morning, Chair, Supervisors, Ryan Tarkell, Hayfork. Like many other speakers this morning, I, I also am, am very frustrated. But I thank everybody that's been speaking this morning. We are very thankful for all the hard work, the employees of the county are putting forth every single day. But that being said, you know, looking at this issue from a global perspective, what, what we're doing isn't working. We need changes today if we want the majority of these participants licensed for next year. It's obvious at the rate we're going here, things just aren't working. And I think we could break the problem down into two separate areas. Number one is technical review. Technical review is not going nearly quick enough. There's a couple solutions to that. We could increase the yearly cap that we pay the consultants so that they can put more hours in on technical review and get people through this process. And we can also, at the county level, put all boots on the ground on technical review. The environmental compliance specialists that are in the office, they should be directed to start technical review immediately. Maybe we should bring on a couple more people because at this rate, there's, there's no way that we're going to get through this. And the second problem that I see is the appendices that have come out of technical review with a recommendation for approval. I'd like to know how many of those right now are currently sitting back in the, in the cannabis division and are being held up for some ordinance compliance-related issue. A lot of these issues are new things that have come up since the new director has started and they're of a discretionary nature. It's not black and white within the ordinance. There's areas that aren't really addressed and the director has a discretionary decision that he can make. In the past, things like this were added as conditions of the license. If it's not expressly required in the ordinance, these things can be added as a condition to the license. You have 60 days to provide this additional information. It's of a discretionary nature and we're going to approve this license. We need to get these licenses out the door and we need to get people operational. These were pre-existing operations that have been operating for many years. Thank you.
Next, we have Tyler.
Hi, good morning, Chair and Supervisors. I was just checking to see if any progress had been made with the transition from PG&E to TPUD in portions of the county. I happen to live in one of those areas and was in another PG&E power outage. I'm sure due to fires down here, but you know, there was one three weeks ago while I was on a Zoom call with RCDAC for a backup generator grant that the water system that I'm on the board of was receiving due to our extended outages over the last couple of years. I'm lucky enough to get that grant, but it's been, you know, significantly more and more in the last few years and it just seems from the people I talked to that are on TPUD, they don't seem to have those issues as much. And I personally would put more faith in a local company like that or organization over PG&E to, to be able to provide service to us. You know, resident businesses, like I said, water systems that are also critical to operating during, during the fires. So anyway, I know that some commissioners have been working on that and I was just hoping that it will progress the way.
Okay, next, we have Marie.
Hi, this is Marie Peterson, District One. I just want to say we need to stop making it harder than ever for the cannabis farmers. All along, the bar keeps getting raised, but now it just keeps on getting raised. And we need to stop raising that bar for them so that people can operate. When you're a little kid and you're playing a game and you're losing that game, you change the rules and then you win the game again. And that's what it seems like is happening because the rules just keep on changing out from underneath us. For example, now we're facing variances from buildings rather than cultivation areas set backs to residences. That's a, that's a rule change and it's making it harder for our farmers. It's really not fair to put this extra requirement on everybody. At this point now, for a license to be issued, every single thing on the farm has to be absolutely perfect. There can't be a gas can in the wrong place. Like every single thing has to be in order. And when we were presented with the transition plan and when we were hearing about the transition plan, it was presented as a way to keep the farmers operational while we're transitioning into CECLA compliance. And now it's like there's no transition. So I'm not really sure what the transition plan is for anymore. But it's really important for us to, you know, maybe the director can be given direction to stop making it harder for the farmers. Yes, we know we want to do things right, but doing it to the extreme where there's just no give, there's, it's not a human situation anymore. So if we could just stop painting the roses red, that would be very helpful for our struggling businesses and families.
Okay, Chairman, I have no additional raised hands on the floor.
I, I, I want to speak.
Okay.
Hello?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, this is Terry Mine, Junction City. Marie just brought up an excellent point. I was at the planning meeting on Thursday of last week and they were doing a barium so we're something that doesn't need a barium. And part of the biggest problem Trinity County is doing is wasting everybody's time, wasting the planning commission's time on things that are actually nonsense, like opt-out zones when the industry's crashed and no one's going to build a new farm somewhere. It's the supervisor's responsibility to have their planners doing things that are actually important for the county, not a waste of time. We understand this is another attempt, it's the county, to really not do what they're supposed to and issue the licenses. You guys took a lot of money from the state of California. One other county just lost half that money because they're not doing it right. You're going to get audited here by the state very soon and they're going to want to see where you spent that money. Fighting lawsuits against your farmers because of your county council's inability to actually, in my opinion, be ethical and do what's best for them. County isn't the best move. It'd be probably smart if the supervisors actually got a council in place that wanted that quit getting sued so they get rich. That's not helping our county. It's not helping the farmers. And it is going to exhaust a lot of funds out of the general fund in cannabis that are completely unnecessary. It's all over not issuing licenses to the farmers when it's your job to issue licenses to the farmers. You took umpteen millions of dollars from us to implement our licenses, which you have failed to do completely. You have a director that needs direction. Could you please continue to give us some direction so one day you can actually issue some licenses in a matter of like, you know, like, you know, how do you say it? Successfully, you know? The, the continuance of hurting our only chance of economic viability in our community is paying its toll on all the local businesses. Not just cannabis, the businesses. We're going to have nothing left here, people. It is on your table to do something about it. Please do your job.
Chairman, I'm pretty sure I still have no additional raised hands on the floor.
Good morning, Chair, Supervisors, Lisa Wright, Lewiston. I'm also the majority owner of a local consulting company, Flora, as well as license holder for eight-four from 2018. I hold a license as well. You know, we've come to you with hungry people. We've come to you with, you know, the unemployed, struggling. We've come to you with, you know, the unemployed, struggling. Now we're coming to you with the ancillary businesses and core businesses for our community closing. This is an economic travesty. I'm not gonna go through everything that's wrong with the way the cannabis program has been implemented. We've, we bring that forward all the time, nothing changes. We come forward with solutions because we've been in this, you know, for six, seven-plus years and actually have some good information to share. And that continues to be ignored. While people still go hungry, people can't pay their bills, losing their properties, moving. There's not gonna be much left. And some people say, "Oh, good, they can move." Well, let's see how many sheriff deputies you have on staff next year to protect you. Let's see what happens to fire protection when things start closing. I, I don't see any other solution being presented by anyone for economic development. It's right here in front of you. I see proposals for adding it to the sales tax to raise a million dollars. Here, farmers are willing to tax themselves. If fully implemented, you're only at three, four million dollars a year into the coffers. That money turns over as well, the economic benefit from economic activity, right? My company alone last year had a payroll of over a million dollars. This year, our revenue is down to half, people are moving to part-time. I'm just an example, you know, of an ancillary business affected. And that's not even the farmers themselves. So what I ask of this board is please put on your thinking caps, maybe have a workshop where we can come together and say, "How do we make this better? How can we improve things?" The variance that was brought up, we can talk about it ad hoc. That doesn't need to be in the ordinance anymore. You know, there are some examples, but we've brought forth solution after solution after solution. And we continue to be ignored while people go hungry. And that's just not right, when it's in the power of government to make sure that doesn't happen. Thank you.
Anyone else in the room? All right, sing. Go ahead.
Hi, good morning. My name's May and to my consent is that I want the county to be concerned about a lot of arrests that is complying with licenses. And the expansion is so late in August like this that a lot of farmer that they have licensed from the state and a lot of farmer that have been especially in the past weeks that they have to clean up their garden and there should be no plants in the garden. So that a lot of farmer have to cut down on the plant. But what about all the illegal people that's around 200000? There's so much fun, there's so, so much plant that the county need to get it on them. And we are the ones that are licenses holder that we obey from the law. And now that a lot of farmer have to clean their garden because it's fashion. So I want the county to be concerned that in the coming year, they're gonna lose a lot of tax 'cause we are paying tax with all the cannabis. Thank you.
All right. That will close public comment. And I will turn on my agenda and move on to reports and announcements. I have 2.1, reports from department heads. Do I have any department heads who wish to report out?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Board members, team Zacks and Sheriff. Got a good briefing this morning for members of the Unified Command and Team 11 firefighting efforts for the Six Rivers Lightning Complex. Just give you a good briefing on what the Sheriff's Office has been doing as a part of that Unified Command. We became involved in that during the beginning of the incident back on August 6th. During the course of that, we responded for evacuations to assist Humboldt County Sheriff's Office and the various firefighters with protections in the communities down river and also in the Willow Creek area when requested by Humboldt County due to their shortage of law enforcement personnel for evacuations. During the time, and this is up until Sunday, these are some figures, just for your information. Straight time, labor hours, about 160 hours. Overtime hours, approximately 480. Extra help hours, approximately 200. And during our finance hours, about 20. So we're looking at about 860 hours at this, at this time. We've put approximately 70, 7200 miles on our fleet during this incident. So as we add this up, we're currently cost to date of about $42,000 from the Sheriff's Office budget. And while you understand this, just for the public knowledge, this comes out of the Sheriff's Budget, our current budget that has not been approved yet. We're still in a preliminary spending pattern right now until the final budget is approved in September. And so it's very important that the public understands that this particular incident is not a federal accepted incident. So these funds are not going to be reimbursed at this time to the county. So these monies come directly out of my budget, which is directly out of county expenditures. So just wanna let you know, this incident is not over. We are currently continuing to send personnel down there. We're hoping to have the last mandatory evacuation area on, in the Salyer area reduced to warnings either today or tomorrow. So that will reduce some of the impact, but we'll still have reduced presence down there because of the warning areas until the entire fire area is deemed to be safe. So that's all I have on the report from me. Thank you.
Sheriff? I just had a quick question. Has there been an issue of looting in, in those zones? I know that's why your sheriffs are there, but have you caught their people?
There's been a couple reports. We had one arrest made when somebody tried to run through the roadblock and that issue was taken care of, the individual was arrested. We have one other report in Salyer area where there was a burglary. Two individuals were caught on surveillance. One of those individuals was subsequently arrested in Humboldt County area. And that, that issue is being investigated this time. My understanding is that all the personal property that was taken has been recovered. But other than that, there have been reports. But unfortunately, those reports never came into the Sheriff's Office. They were, to my understanding, reported in the community. The deputies down there were told of those things and they followed up independently with community members and looked at it from that standpoint.
Thank you for all of your guys' hard work.
You're welcome. That's, that's what we do.
Any other department heads? Do I have any department heads on the floor?
I thought we were going to have one, but I don't see any.
Our row has raised a hand.
There we go, thank you. Go ahead, Ryan.
Good morning and thank you, Board of Supervisors. I wanted to bring up an issue that we had a little bit ago. A few months ago, we had a grievance filed by the PPOA and I wanted to let you know that we have come to resolution on that grievance with the four individuals. And I will bring by a copy of the settlement agreement and release for you, Chairman Crager.
All right.
I see no additional raised hands or hats around me.
We will move on to report from CAO. And you have nothing to report? Report from the Board of Supervisors, we'll start on this end. Supervisor Gogan?
I have no county travel, nothing to report.
Likewise, I have nothing to report out. Supervisor Cox?
I do. I am thrilled to be able to report that we finally have a path to make sure that our Title II and Title III fundings get reported and we don't lose that 15%. No other county travel.
Okay. Supervisor Groves?
Yeah, I, I wanted to bring it to attention that the after tomorrow is the end of the ability to make comments to the Bureau or BLM Wild and Scenic Eligibility Study, which does impact Trinity County. It impacts Canyon Creek, West Weaver Creek. What was the other one? I forget the other one. What this is, is right now that BLM is going through and conducting studies on what could be eligible in the future for Wild and Scenic and the meaning of that. And they've listed several of these. I bring this to the attention mainly to point out why this county desperately needs a natural resource department. Because this is moving forward and quite frankly, we don't even understand what the impacts would be to how, if it does at some point become designated and what those meanings are. So I, I think this just emphasizes that the need for us to be more active in what we have going on within our county with these agencies. Besides that, I didn't have any county travel and I guess we have a lot to talk about cannabis here.
All right, well.
Oh, let me, let me add that the CCA, which was asked about, that's under Jeremy's, what he's watching at. That process is still moving forward as far as I know, but getting a, an update from Jeremy would be the best for that, which was the power of T-Pod power.
And Jeremy, you're online, so you can, do you have something to report out?
Yes, I am here, thank you. Sorry to not make it to Weberville today on the big screen. Main things I'd like to report on are first and foremost the fire. The response has been, in my mind, pretty incredible. We're pretty fortunate to have over 2,000 crew members in the Willow Creek area. The size of the town doubled in approximately 10 days. And the communication's been outstanding. The Unified Command has been reassuring. So far, the worst impact from the fire has been one of the Salyer Loop Road water systems. Sustained a lot of damage to some old fiberglass tanks. A pump melted and some of the lines melted as well. So there's a short-term and long-term solutions being looked at. Short-term being bottled water, drinking water will be provided in the area. And long-term's a little bit more complicated because it requires expensive repairs. But the Department of Water Resources, State Water Resource Control Board, Trinity OES, they're doing a great job communicating with all of the state agencies that we depend on to make that plan come to fruition and hopefully funded through grant monies. What else? Just a reminder, you know, I've had time to be in Willow Creek and meet with a lot of firefighters and incident command team. And it's been really reassuring for me at least, just having a more personal connection with some of these crew members and just reminding the community that a lot of the fire crew members have all left their, their families at home to come defend our communities and protect our families' homes and things like that. And I think it just, it slips our mind sometimes that their families are, are at home waiting for them to return from doing something incredibly dangerous and risky. And I've got a lot of gratitude for fire crew members and their families that support them in their efforts to defend our homes and try to suppress these fires as soon as possible. So big thanks to all members, any, any fire crew anywhere. It means a lot. I had RCRC Cannabis Ad hoc last Friday. We had a good presentation from CDFW on cannabis enforcement for legal and illegal growers. It was a little bit more information than I had heard in the past, and so that was helpful. And as far as some of the public comment I heard regarding water storage for cannabis growers, all of that is dependent on Trinity County's Equity Program, which is being assessed currently through the cannabis, more or less the Cannabis Interdisciplinary Department, I think, at HSU. We're supposed to get an update, I believe, this, this month. So I sent an email to Dominic, who is leading that effort. Hopefully we'll have an email, or sorry, an update at the next board meeting. But until that equity assessment is completed, we can't engage with any of the equity dollars. And the reason why Humboldt was able, at least in my opinion, why Humboldt was able to accomplish the equity program in advance is because they have their own Economic Development Department. And that's something that Trinity County lacks. And so they're able to do self-assessments from their department on the county at what is best offered for their cannabis population. So we started that equity process, I believe it was April of '21. We finalized that grant of $70,000 that initiated that, that process. And they conducted their interviews over the last year and they're supposed to come to the board with a proposal on what our equity program will look like and offer our cannabis growers and other people affected by the war on drugs. That's equity program.
I think we lost you, Jeremy.
Provided, and they would look at what that would entail. And that would come back to the board with a proposal of what a community choice aggregate program would look like as far as the cost of.
Could you start your CCA thing over? You kind of froze up on this for about 30 seconds.
Well, that's embarrassing. I apologize on salad. Okay, so the CCA is dependent on a third-party analysis. That's the shorter version. It would probably cost somewhere between $25,000 and $30,000. And there are state consultants that do that analysis of how many customers are impacted, what's the total amount, and what would be the cost of that power to make it a formal business plan. So it's pretty extensive. It's not a small project by any means. It requires upfront money to be spent. Maybe we could find grant monies for it. But that's where that is at, so. The only other thing I have to report on, report out on is that I was appointed to the Cannabis Advisory Committee, which is a state governors and Department of Cannabis appointment. It's a two-year term, so I'll be serving that two-year term as a licensed farmer and until the end of the year as a Trinity County Supervisor. But I will be one of 14 individuals representing cannabis policy for the state of California and bringing recommendations, mostly from the northern region, and I believe as the only state licensed grower. So with that, I think that concludes my report out unless anyone has any questions.
Jeremy, this is Keith. On the CCA, are you planning to bring that to the board for us to get some money? Or are you gonna look for money and, and then bring it up?
Um, I, I can do, it's all flexible. I have no specific attachment. You know, my personal feeling on it is that it's gonna be incredibly challenging. And it's not necessarily, the numbers aren't necessarily gonna be in the favor of initiating the CCA. And that's just based on me talking with other CCA members around the state, other power companies and policy people in Sacramento that have watched CCAs be successful and unsuccessful. The challenge for us is the low population served, approximately 1,000 customers would be served through the CCA. And that's just a challenging amount of electrical revenue to build an actual business that can sustain the ups and downs of pipe drill power as it fluctuates year-to-year based on water supply. Yeah, it's challenging. So at the board's pleasure, I'm happy, and I've said it before, I'm trying to slack everybody. I can make a, I can agendaize it and put these concepts formally in front of everybody and the board can make a formal decision on if we want to look forward or spend that money. And I guess while I'm at it, I'll update on the standing wave in Big Flap. Know a lot of the community had negative concerns or just concerns about the project. Some about the project as a whole, some about the project with its specific location. Tribes have a lot of concerns over water flow and river impacts, impacts to the fish habitat. So although there was a lot of community support when the item was presented, I've received a lot of concerns and backlash, but port line backlash of this impact to the Trinity River. And so the Noral Nuk Nation was interested in having a community meeting on August 27th in Big Bar at their tribal headquarters, where it presents what this project could bring, what it is, what it isn't. There's a lot of flexibility. This isn't a design project. It's a potential project and community involvement is crucial for it to actually go anywhere. So on the 27th in Big Bar at the old Cox Park School, that is the new Noral Nuk tribal headquarters, there should be a community meeting there on the potential wave project. If it's found that no one is interested in it, there's a chance we'll look at other locations along the Trinity River. If there's a community such as Junction City had expressed interest for the one area over there where it could potentially work, that's something we may look into. As I'll be bringing the board at the end of the year. If no one else is really interested in, or entities really take on interest in seeing this project through, I doubt it's likely to go anywhere. My independent efforts as a citizen outside of being a supervisor for this project would be limited. You know, I'm not a whitewater rafter or a surfer or anything, so there's no selfish interest. It's just economic development and restoration efforts in my mind. So does that answer the question? Supervisor Groves?
Yeah, I'd love to see you bring that discussion of the CCA forward and good luck on the way because maybe we can find something in Lewiston.
Lewiston is, there is a spot in Lewiston at the lower dam where it could work.
Okay, thank you.
All right. With that, we can jump into report.
Did you use the, what? Did you do one?
Yeah, I didn't have anything to report.
Okay, I'm sorry. That's what I missed.
Yep, so we can go into the report from the cannabis cultivation ad hoc.
As the group knows, that we did not have a, we're trying to have no ad hoc meetings during the planning commission days to get staff more prepared. So there was a lot of public comment today. Oh, there's two things I did want to bring up. One is that, and I apologize, last meeting, I did not report that staff, there was a staff member that got an email that was a pretty threatening email. And Director Connell has, is changing some of his his protocols on how people go out to sea sites. He was very worried about safety and keeping his staff feeling safe. It was, in my opinion, a very direct threat to one individual, so they are on top of that. And so just to try to answer some of the questions. For the person that asked about the numbers of licenses, Director Connell gave those numbers that should be in the data from last week's meeting. He's broken it down by zoning district and it's broken down by type of license. So those are all available on that meeting. We will be, he is committed to doing that once a month, so we'll have that public. Jeremy covered the equity grant part that was talking about the water storage. We are being told that they're likely to have something in September, that it should be coming forward more than an update the proposed program. The, what else do we have? The progress report, we will bring that up in ad hoc. I would like to see that progress report and then bring it and report it to the board at the next meeting. And this is the progress report from the states, you know, that was talked about today. It was also mentioned that we have a cap on the amount of hours for our consultants to work. I think that's a misnomer. We don't have a cap. We, you know, when we approve a budget, we set an amount of dollar amount. But if we reach that, that number, I personally would recommend that we keep going. So the lack of money or time is not, in my understanding, a hindrance for this process to move forward. The, of course, this week we will have the ad hoc, and so we'll get updated on how many more licenses. We have, we have had several licenses that are being held up on the county side now or to get up to the county ordinance. My understanding of those are things as, such as that they've let their building permits expire. They haven't paid their taxes. What was the other one?
Expired salad permits were an issue, stuff that Director just felt were beyond the, you can't really operate without it, so you couldn't have it as a condition of your license. It had to be done first.
So I highly recommend that people go through, that if you're in technical review, to really go through and do your due diligence on having completed all the things within the ordinance. These are pretty blatant things that you've had to have and make sure that you haven't let something expire. We will definitely take a look at the variance and how that's being interpreted in the next ad hoc and have a discussion on that to see what's happening. I also want to point out that the, there has been the first rejection of a license for non-compliance. This license is one that, when they did the inspection, they found that there was some severe environmental issues such as a sump, a sump holding diesel oil in the ground, diesel tanks leaking water issues. So that license-
Water tanks leaking diesel.
Water tanks leaking diesel, yes, I'm sorry. And so that license has been revoked. The last number I think we saw was there was nine that were out that are waiting to get through their county process. So go ahead, Dan, pick up whatever I missed.
I believe that was, you pretty well covered it. I did not, I don't have a lot of notes. Our last ad hoc meeting was not all that well attended and not much happened at our last ad hoc. So I have all my notes on half a page instead of like a normal four or five pages. So I think you covered it.
I will say that I, there was a, I had an opportunity to review one of the CEQA documents. And when I went and reviewed it, I was disappointed in the quality of work. This was a random one, not brought to me by staff, but by somebody else. And there was really some blatant errors that were in there. And gosh, it's frustrating to hear what we see and then to have people just make some simple blatant errors that they get kicked out. So I hear what people are saying. I get it. It's frustration. It's, this process of going through the CEQA process is very difficult and frustrating. But it's not, there's nothing that we can do to wave a hand to keep things moving. Yes, we've had problems and communication is the number one problem that we have worked on and hopefully is getting better, and we will continue to work on that. But there is no magic wand, and I hear a lot of frustration and I hear a lot of, we should fix it. But I don't hear a lot of, this is how you fix it. When people come and give us, we look at every suggestion that we look at. Some are valuable and we put forward, some aren't legal, some are some that we disagree that will be helpful. So we are still in this process. I understand the pain. I understand the industry's in a difficult time on top of having this issue. But at this point, I don't see a lot else to do except keep slogging for it.
When you said nine licenses are out waiting in the county process, you mean they're done?
They, the question was, is the nine licenses in the county process, those are ones that have exited CEQA and are waiting to be to comply with issues that our county, such as last meeting they talked about, the variance now. They had to go to get their variance needed, or there was one that was found that it should have had variance the whole time and didn't. Now, the discussion on where we draw the line, that's a fair discussion that we'll have and look at. If there's a different interpretation than where we're at, that's fair enough. We'll look at what's going on there. But those are the sort of things that they have to be compliant with ours to get their license.
So Keith, last board meeting, I think Director Connell said there were seven applications on his desk ready to go out. And they weren't noticed. Was there any reason that not being-
We haven't been updated. I know there was one license that that there was discussion, that the neighbor looked at it and called in discussion some issues that Director Connell was going to take a look at in the CEQA document, that it possibly would go back into the CEQA. But we haven't had an update on this on this Saturday yet.
So were they, were they ready or were they, appeared to be as a board member, when he said we have seven ready to go, that Wednesday I looked in the paper and seen seven.
You had seven ready to go on Tuesday, you couldn't get those by Wednesday?
Yeah, I can't give you a good answer. I don't know what he meant, ready to go, if that meant that they were out of CEQA and they were looking at them, or if, I don't have a good answer for you.
So maybe that might be part of the communication that continually gets talked about here. You know, I think that at times, you know, I heard a meeting or so ago that the county would take overall inspections, that like when ELS would not be doing inspections. And then later that week, I see that ELS is out doing a lot of inspections. And I work here, I mean, and I'm confused about exactly what's going on. I can only imagine the confusion, the non-clarity for the people out there. It's difficult to keep up with what's being done, what's being said. For me, I can only imagine how confused they may be out there, what's going on and what's not going on.
So at this point, the consultants are no longer doing, except if they've finished their, the ones they've been allotted. So they're out of that process. We're only going to have one internal person working on inspections at this point. Everybody else has wheeled into doing the technical issues. The three new staff members that have that ability are working on this process. We are reporting, and I should have said this earlier, and I apologize to to staff, that they are encouraging people to come in the office now that they have the ability to meet you and discuss things with you at the counter and at least take your notes and talk to the compliance people. So that's, that's, that's been, for a week or two, that's, or at least two weeks, that's been a request. And for people that, we understand that that didn't work before, but now that's coming back in. So if you have questions, bring those in.
Any other questions? Saying none? Does anyone need to take a break before moving to consent calendar? All right, we will take a break and come back at 11 o'clock. These items include routine, non-controversial matters and will be acted upon by one roll call motion. If members of, if a member of the public has any questions or comments on an item on the consent calendar, they may provide them now. A member of the board or staff may request an item to be pulled and considered separately. Do we have any public comment on the consent agenda?
Chairman Frasier, I have no raised hands and no no charges.
All right, no public comment on the consent agenda. Any board members or staff have any items they wish to be pulled?
Public pull item 3.12, please.
Okay, and any others? Saying none. Would anyone care to make a motion?
I would move to adopt the balance of the consent for minus 3.12.
Hold a second. All right, any further discussion?
Supervisor Gogan?
Aye.
Supervisor Cox?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown? Supervisor Brown? Supervisor Groves?
Aye.
Chairman Frasier?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, and item 3.2. Suzie, go ahead, Dan.
I just asked that this one be pulled because we, upon further review, it was brought to our attention that there's an issue with the legal description as it was presented to you. So my request is that the item be approved with the direction to staff to correct the legal description so that it is a reportable legal description for the pieces of the property that are needed for the project.
Okay. Do we, I gotta open it up to public comment, so do we have any public comment on item 3.12?
Chairman Frasier, Supervisors Grove and Cox and Gogan, my name is Kelly Sheen. Good morning. I'm the district manager of the Trinity County RCD Resource Conservation District. The RCD is the stewards of the Young Family Ranch, which is adjacent to the cemetery property. And I just wanted to give you a little bit of history about the intent of this project. The RCD has worked on and for the Young Family Ranch for quite a number of years. And as well, we've also worked with the Moonlea Ditch Association, which is a group of landowners that have water rights to water from the Moonlea ditch itself. The ditch itself has not been running water for probably now close to six years. And because of that, the ditch has gone into, you know, a great deal of- And because of that, the ditch has gone into, you know, a great deal of disrepair. And we, we've worked with the Weverville Community Service District, Tim Casper and their staff to try to get water running through the ditch, to get water primarily to the cemetery. The cemetery board had ponied up about $5,000 to get a tap off of the CSD's eight-inch main that goes into the Trinco Water Treatment Plant on the west side of town, up on the hill there. And in order to put water into the ditch so that, you know, the ditch can flow and they can pull water off of it so they can water their, their property there and have green lawn within the actual cemetery. We cleaned the ditch last year with generous donations from the actual ditch association itself and a substantial chunk from the Young Family Ranch Board. And cleared it and ran water in it, it was running some water, but not quite all the way down to where the intake is for the cemetery's tanks. And, but we let it sit because the weather came in, it was November, I think, of last year. And after that, we just kind of went through the winter time, cleaned up this spring and have been running water in it for quite some time now, which I believe has stopped because at a certain point, it just undergrounds within the ditch. So part of this project that we're trying to get accomplished is piping water from the, from that tap that the cemetery put in, down the ditch line itself and to, to both feed the water abusers that have rights to water off the ditch line and including the cemetery and the Young Family Ranch. And so, so part of what we're asking for, well, we've put in a proposal to the Natural Resources Conservation Service through their EQUIP program and were awarded some funding to be able to assist with this particular project. And what we're trying to do basically is, is the NRCS will feel a lot better if we have the ability to maintain the, the infrastructure that we intend to put in for, for this particular project, part of which crosses the westernmost corner of the cemetery's property. If you have any other questions as we go along, don't hesitate to ask. Thank you.
I have no raised hands and no no shouts.
All right. Well, closed public comment, bringing it back to the board.
So I would make a motion to accept this with the understanding that the legal description will be changed. We don't, do we have an exhibit that I can refer to?
An Exhibit A.
Okay, the legal description changed to Exhibit A.
Well, we'll be modifying Exhibit A to be.
Oh, we already have.
We, there is an Exhibit A attached, it's not recordable as it was presented. And so the request is that you approve it.
Okay, approve agreement with a updated Schedule A.
Allowing staff to modify that to be recordable.
What she said, yeah, I was gonna try to not get there.
Second, thank you.
All right, we have a motion, a second, any further discussion?
Yeah, when we're giving an easement under the, under the cemetery, I just asked for caution when we're, we're giving, no, I'm just. Be careful where under is.
As part of your allowance and us modifying that legal description, we're going to limit it to only the areas that are necessary for the project.
All right, any further? Saying none?
Supervisor Cox?
Aye.
Supervisor Groves?
Aye.
Supervisor Gogan?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Still sidelined it out?
Supervisor Brown? Yep. Chairman Frasier?
Aye.
Thank you.
Moving on. Public hearings. Building and Development Services. Item 4.1, continue from August 2nd, 2022, a public hearing to consider taking the following actions regarding the establishment of limited density rural dwelling regulations. One, find the adoption and implementation of this ordinance to be exempt from California Environmental Quality Act pursuant of CEQA Guidelines, Section 15061B3, the common sense exemption, which applies to projects where the activity will not result in a significant effect on the environment. Two, introduce and waive the reading of an ordinance adding a section to Chapter 15 of Trinity County Code regarding limited density rural dwellings. And direct staff to file a copy of this ordinance with the Department of Cal's Housing and Community Development, complete with the local findings for each local change or modification the alternative regulations can take within state housing law or California building standards law pertaining to limited density owner-built rural dwellings. Okay, Director Presley.
Good morning, Board, Chairman, CAO, County Council. So this is the infamous return of Class K housing that I think has been for years in the making. And I was, I was given the, an enviable position of trying to present this. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to read off of page one here because I believe the, really the crux of the argument is captured in these beginning paragraphs of the actual ordinance itself. And I would like nothing more than to stipulate these on the record in addition to the other comments that were received. The purpose of this ordinance is to provide minimum requirements, minimum requirements for the protection of life, limb, and welfare of the general public and the owners and occupants of limited density owner-built rural dwellings and apartment structures. The intent and application is to apply to the, this ordinance is to apply to the construction, enlargement, conversion, alteration, repair, use, maintenance, and occupancy of limited density owner-built rural dwellings and associated structures. Is the intent herein that this would apply to seasonally or permanently occupied dwellers, dwellings, hunting shelters, guest homes, vacation homes, recreational shelters, and detached bedrooms located in rural areas. That is basically the crux of my argument in bringing it to the board this morning for review. This was authored by County Council and I think the chairman himself. And I would just recommend that people on the board and the public actually review the items that are listed with this as far as items of consideration. I do have Environmental Health Director here, Kristi Anderson, I have a planning associate, planner, Skylar, and unfortunately, the building department was unable to represent this morning, but as I understand, some of his words and advisements have been sent up. So.
With that, we can open the public hearing on item 4.1.
Dan, do you want to talk about any technical here or?
I think we can.
On a wait?
Do you want to get into it or do you want to wait till after the public? I think, let's wait till after the public, a public hearing, because there are some issues we have to go over, the planning commissions, recommendations and all that stuff.
You got it.
Good morning, Board, Don Law with Cal Fire, Shasta County Unit. I oversee the Trinity County and Western Shasta County portion. So we just wanted to kind of make a comment on what the proposal is. So right now is the way it sits, we oppose the proposal due to a couple reasons in there. It doesn't talk about any of the 4290 or 4291 requirements required by the state for roadways, driveways, clearance around the buildings. It also kind of goes down the same path of Chapter 7A of the Building Code, which talks about the fire safety standards and the WUI standards. So looking at the proposal, one of the concerns I have is when you start talking about bedrooms, making sure there's proper egress out of those bedrooms, the construction of the building itself, what it has on the exterior siding, there is that section about the roofs, metal roof, but the siding is also a concern. So what we're looking at, especially in Trinity County, in a very rural area, the response time for a lot of these areas is very great. So the home can be one of the last safety standards for someone to be able to survive a fire if they can't drive out soon enough. That isn't, what we also use is our last refuge if the fire is moving. So if you have a building that's not built to a standard, that could pose a problem for the residents inside the house or the fire service if they're trying to use that building as a last ditch refuge. Also, going back to the 4290 portion, driveway standards. I believe there needs to be something in there about driveway standards just for the fact that if there's not an adequate driveway, we cannot provide services with fire or EMS to be able to get to that structure or that residence. So that's a grave concern. And then just going back to the 4290 of clearance and 4291, making sure that the vegetation is clear before the building is approved. That's one of the biggest things we've seen in modeling fires, that is able to defend a house or allow it to stand. And then going farther down the road, looking at some of the issues that come up, we've seen a lot in the past history, the cause of a fire. If a building causes a fire due to whether they're running off a generator or there's improper wiring or anything else inside that structure and it causes grave damage, we've seen it a lot with major companies, other landowners, they get sued. My fear would be is if someone doesn't have the money, they're going to go out to the next bigger pockets, which would be the county, for allowing that approval for that building to go in. That's just a last, you know, worst case scenario. So those are some of the issues we see from the fireside that would need to be addressed in this, but the way it stands right now, we actively oppose it.
Any questions? You didn't mention sprinklers or water.
Right, just due to time constraints, looking, you start going down sprinklers, sprinklers, the design of the sprinkler system in a structure is really for the residents to be able to get out of the structure if there is a fire inside. That's for the safety, it's not to save the structure, it's for the safety of the residents inside. When you start looking at construction with open, open construction, no sheet rock, open studs, it will propagate fire much faster. So something that would reduce the spread of fire in the building would be instrumental. The reason why there is sheet rock is that is actually a fire barrier, reduces the amount of fire spread inside of a building. Especially if you're looking at, you know, this allows two and a half stories maximum, depending if they're using bloom frame construction or what kind of construction they're using, that can spread fire faster between one floor to the second floor. So sprinklers would be something that would be, we would encourage, especially in those far out areas where you may be looking at an hour before a fire engine shows up if there is a fire. Water storage is always crucial, I mean, you can see right now in the state, we're in a drought scenario, so a lot of those resources we had for water in the past, we don't have. So having water storage on site that we can use for fire suppression, whether it's a wilding fire or a structured fire, where we have that ability to suppress that fire faster would be also very critical.
Thank you. Any thoughts? Thank you.
Steve, my injunction city, I appreciate the, the words from the, from the fire department folks, but just also, I think the purpose of this Class K housing is, for one thing, there's a extreme housing shortage in California, there's an extra, extreme housing shortage in Trinity County. I know there's nowhere to rent anywhere near, near me. Junction City, there's nothing for rent around Junction City. I think that we can, Trinity County is also an extremely rural county, getting building supplies is, are everything about building in Trinity County is just extra, extra, extra expensive. And I believe that Class K housing is a, can be a safe, well-done alternative to some of the really overly burdensome regulations that you face trying to get a building built, especially here in Trinity County. I think the proposals are reasonable. I think that you're gonna, you're gonna be able to bring some structures more into compliance than they are now by offering people a pathway to have an inspector come out, make some safety suggestions, and still be able to build apartment structures, barns, sheds, you know, and even some, you know, dwelling units that we can start opening up places for people to live and to rent and to still be part of this community. You know, I know that like the coach of the high school still lives in Reading. I believe there's a lot of people that work in Trinity County that still live in Reading because there's, there's just nothing available here, or what is available is maybe not satisfactory or maybe you don't want an apartment in downtown Weverville, like something a little nicer, a little more out in the country, which is 95% of the county. But it is, anybody who's tried to build in this county, doing any kind of owner-builder stuff knows exactly what I'm talking about and that's probably why Class K was brought here. I encourage us to finish this up, get it on the books, and I'll start rolling it. Thank you.
I hadn't planned on speaking today, but I do have to disagree with Cal Fire on a couple of things. Cal Fire was the one that came into our property and said, everything is perfect, you brushed way back, your cement, board siding, et cetera, et cetera. And it ended up being burned by a bad backfire after the fire service took over. But when you live four miles from the closest power pole, these things such as the automatic sprinklers, car chargers, instant water heaters, don't work because I have yet to see a four-mile extension cord that we can plug it into. So I think that some of this is fine when you have closer density, but when you have greater density out, these things just don't work. And I, so I think those should be considered as not viable in this for people who live off the grid. Thank you.
Good afternoon, well, good morning, Phil. Ron Gerke. My concern is with the definitions under owner-built. It doesn't look like there's an exemption or an allowance for building rental units. So if there is such a housing shortage in the county, and I know that from friends that have lost their places and had moved out of the county because they couldn't find any place else to rent, and it's, it's not intended to be used for commercial purposes such as short-term, long-term, or employee housing. Will that eventually time out or is that a permanent definition?
That is a permanent definition because this is by definition for your own use. But anything commercial would have to go through the California, full California Building Code.
Okay, so how is that going to solve the affordable housing situation of the last gentleman presenting? I ask it rigorously.
Do we have any public comment on Zoom?
Yes, Veronica?
Good morning, this is Veronica Kelly-Abby, Duluth City. And I wanted to speak on this project. I'm, I'm excited to see some attempts and movement on this. I remember when Supervisor Frasier was the commissioner and brought it up, and I remember a presentation by Commissioner Ford on this many years ago. The spirit and intent, from what I understood from that time to this time, is this is a way to provide families that lost their homes to natural disasters or, or other ways, provide own homeowners to rebuild at, within, having some standards, but lower standards that would make it more possible for them to rebuild and remain in Trinity County. I do believe this should not be a commercial, or a way for commercial housing to occur. That is a very different animal, so to speak, and protecting those that live and rent in those kind of places would need a higher standard. There are some things I had questions on, on, like the owner-built can apply as an owner-built once every two years. Is that after the first project is completed? When does that two-year time start? Because that could create a loophole for more commercial building. Property taxes, when do they start and when, because there was the talk about temporary, living in the temporary house or getting temporary agreement to live there. Under the enforcement agency, during the commission meeting, they all agreed that it should list out all of the departments that would be considered enforcement agency involved, environmental, Cal Fire, maybe that is, there was one commissioner that thought it was all encompassed already under the Trinity County Building Department, but it was suggested that they all be listed, so there's no surprise. but it was suggested that they all be listed, so there's no surprises. Let's see, there was no time limit on progress. The, the building permit could be allowable for an indefinite amount of time, but how would that progress track? I would suggest putting in something like an annual report, like when you do a grant, they ask for a report, where are you at, what's going on? Something that can be put in the file and could create continuity for anyone looking at that file, from, from day one to years or whenever it might be completed. But I think there should be some sort of tracking mechanism that would assist, not hinder, but assist the staff in knowing where everyone is at. I think those are my main concerns that I saw in the document, but Cal Fire, I think, has a very valid concern regarding fire and things that need to be addressed in that area as well. I really want to see people be able to build back and stay, but we want to be able to do it safely and not create a commercial entity that could create substandard housing in some form. Thank you very much.
Next, we have Ryan.
Good afternoon, Chair, Supervisors, Ryan Tarbell of A4. I fully support adoption of this proposed ordinance. Over the last number of years, I've done several owner-built houses and the cost is, is really just getting prohibitive to, to do new construction. You know, you're talking twenty, thirty grand before you even begin to lift a shovel and then, you know, these sprinkler systems that are now required to go into these houses fifteen, twenty thousand easily. It's just really getting prohibitive for most people, so any way that you can just meet the absolute minimum requirements that you need to be held to by law, I really encourage you to walk that line. We're really in an economic crisis here and, you know, and, and the people need help. And this is something tangible that can be done right now to help this community. And I would like, like to thank Supervisor Frazier and Gogan for putting in the time on this through their ad hoc and, and bringing this forward. I think, I think this is a really great step. Thank you.
Next, we have Matt.
Hi, Chairman and Board, Matt Jefferson from Coffee Creek. I just kinda wanna reiterate what one of the previous speakers brought up about living off-grid and how restrictive the current building codes are, and just like how financially burdensome it becomes when, like for me, I'm, I'm gonna say more than ten miles from a power line. Like electricity is really not a reality at our place. To keep like a pressureized water system functioning twenty-four seven, to keep sprinklers in my roof, or like if I wanted to build something new, it's very burdensome, and I think it also just comes down to personal property rights and it comes down to the fact that I don't care if the fire department wants sprinklers in my house or not, like it's my choice if I wanna live off-grid. And it's my choice if I want sprinklers in my roof or not. I don't think it should actually be a requirement. It kinda makes it a lot more difficult for folks like us that wanna live out in rural communities, off-grid. Makes it very difficult for us to be able to do that. This bill would super support people being able to live in rural communities, off-grid, and it would make it more realistic. I just super support it. I hope you guys can pass it. Thank you. Have a good day.
Adrian?
Thank you, Chair, Commissioners, almost, almost said Commissioners again. I do support this and for a lot of the same reasons, just any, this county is in pretty tough shape, the country is, the state is, so, you know, those issues go beyond our borders, but we need to come up with creative ways of approaching, you know, trying to find stability for residents and trying to find housing. And I absolutely hear what the Cal Fire representative said. I, I was under the impression that the road standards would be part of a condition of any building permits, so it didn't even cross my mind. And also, if sprinklers are included in the final language, I hope it can be like typified, made very clear in the code that that's for residences, so like nonetheless, like a barn or whatever sort of ancillary, like, I don't know, storage facilities you might wanna build on, one of these type of permits, don't accidentally get stuck with the, with the fire sprinkler language. Yeah, I support anything, anything the county can do to help its citizens get down the road and improve the quality of life and keep people living here. I support. Thank you.
Next, we have Tom.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of board, Tom Balaico, Douglas City. And as I'm sure everyone knows, I very much support this ordinance, very happy to see it here. By definition, we are talking about owner-built, limited-density rural dwellings, so these are for owners. They're not rentable. I believe there is in the state code a period of time after owners have lived in there that it becomes a regular dwelling, and I think, I don't know how many years it is, but I imagine we just track state law on that one. Either way, I, I am very much in favor of passing this. And, Mr. Chair, I would like to applaud your efforts specifically in this endeavor. I know you and I sometimes independently, sometimes together, have been working on this issue for, I think as long as I've known you, maybe seven or eight years now. All through your time as the Commissioner, all through your time as a, as a board member, and it, while the efforts are outstanding, and again, I, I, I know that this would not be here without your efforts, it is an unfortunate testament about the inertia and the friction that we're often working against, even for something as popular as this ordinance. I think in all the years, we've heard just a handful of negative comments and overwhelming support, so this is good for the county, this cuts across all spectrums of how you feel about cannabis or not feel about cannabis, whether you think logging is a good idea. This is one of those issues that is very popular across the board, so I'm very happy to see it here. And I know there's no demonstrations in, in the boardroom there, but thanks to Zoom, I'm at home, so here I genuinely applaud your efforts. Please pass it.
John?
I also encourage approval of this ordinance as written. I think that if we're talking about the health and safety of Trinity County, that on whole, we're better off with folks actually going for this, this alternative building code and, and permitting their structures as opposed to just building them anyway. And in the long term, it seems like this is a great answer to that, and I also applaud Chairman Frazier's diligence on this and sticking with it. And it seems like this is a really simple fix to an issue that's plagued Trinity for a long time, and it lets folks participate in property taxes and have a very reasonable, feasible, alternative standard that's acceptable in the rest of the state. I say we move forward with it immediately. Thank you.
Tyler?
Good morning again, Chairman and Supervisors. I also wanna ask for support from members of the board for this proposal and thank Chairman Frazier for for getting it in front of everybody and giving the public a chance to have, have this in the county. I believe that there are many benefits to this that outweigh some of the issues that could potentially be caused by it. One, personal safety, I think, could be left up to themselves. I think a lot of people that would be building these types of structures probably aren't anticipating a whole lot of support from emergency services, just even to the rural locations, you know, if you're potentially an hour away from those services, you're probably gonna be expecting to take care of yourself in, in an emergency situation. So although I appreciate all the efforts done by first responders and so forth, I think that there can hopefully be a balance struck for this to move forward with, with blessings, because as the previous speaker said, oftentimes this is, these types of things are just built anyway with zero oversight, so maybe having some road standards or some, some amount of input from agencies, albeit maybe not the stringent code for high-density housing, would be a benefit to what the current practice is. And just heading in a background as a former general contractor, you know, oftentimes people that build something for themselves are going to do a better job than somebody who's doing it for profit, even with codes in place, so I just think that there's so much support for this from the community and from the public, and I just hope that there is a way to strike some sort of a balance from, from oversight and, and get this to the people who actually want to be able to utilize it. So again, thank you, and I hope that everybody can, can find a way to support it.
Ag?
Good morning, everyone. This is Abby Goodyear from Weaverville. I also really support passing this. There's just one issue that I have, which is limiting, putting a parcel size limit on it at two-point-five acres. We have lots of properties that are gonna qualify based on their zoning that will not meet that two-and-a-half acres, and that means you're gonna leave a lot of, excuse me, landowners and, and potential homeowners out of the ability to use this process to be able to have a livable home and be able to increase, you know, the livability of their property. So I just ask that if anything, you would remove the parcel size limit from this, and everything else looks great. Thanks so much for your time. Thank you for your work comments.
Chairman Frazier, I have no additional raised hands and no new chats.
All right, unless we have any others in the room, we will close the panel and bring it back to the board. So. I do have some, some stuff I would like to clean up in here that I've noticed, I don't know, we need to have a motion before we do that, or if we have to try to capture that all in one motion, that would be, I'm looking at counsel over there now.
Were you gonna ask your technical questions?
I do have, well, I, yeah, some, we can do some technical questions, and I do have one issue that I've noticed, and it was something that Cal Fire brought up, and that I see it, it's a typo that needs to be changed before this is finalized. Under definitions, in D where it says limited-density rural dwelling, that should say not exceeding one-and-a-half stories, not two-and-a-half. I don't know how that got into the, I was never even in any of the rough drafts, so I don't know how that become. And there's a reason why, that, that, one of the technical issues that was, we went through with the planning question.
I have some typo stuff. Under permits, this would be the third page, number K, says, shall be the duty, on the last line of that paragraph, it should be the duty of the enforcement agency to notify the applicant of the day during which the inspection should be, something's wrong here. Either during needs to be replaced or...
The day, yeah, just the day which the inspection is being conducted, that would make more sense.
I see, that's what you were trying to say.
So the electronic version, actually, it doesn't look like it printed well. It does say applicant of the day during which the inspection is to be conducted. So it, it is supposed to be there, it's just a weird, like, conversion issue?
But the, the, if we just said the, to notify the applicant of the day which the inspection is going to be conducted, would make more sense than saying the day during which the inspection is going to be conducted.
Either that or a comma.
Or a comma, yeah.
So what did you want to read out? I'm gonna make notes over here.
I would, during, less is more, I would say, that's what I was trying. And then on the regulation section, which would be the fourth page, number B, fifteen-point-zero-four-oh, number B, structure shall on parcels that are at least two-and-a-half, so it should be, shall be on parcels. See, the same, three pages long, this is no big deal, there's just a, under sanitation requirements, number R, there's this extra space and help.
Page Delta.
Yeah, I'm, I'm Mister extra space every time I do something. So those are the typos I saw.
Right, the technical questions.
So, explain to me, well, number one, we had the road issue, so does this pertain to the road egress at all in this, or is that?
I don't think that our county building department has the authority to override Cal Fire, which we did. No offense to Cal Fire, but I think that they've way overstepped on a lot of their, their requirements for roads. It also only pertains, Cal Fire road requirements only pertain to areas that are state-covered areas, which as some people don't really know, there are places in Trinity County that are not state-covered areas, like my district, most of it except Katton Pond, there's state-covered areas, the rest is an FRA. So the road requirements will still be there for areas that are in the SRA. In FRA, those road requirements are different anyway because Cal Fire isn't the response.
All right, and then for the fire, the, the building department said that we can't overrule fire safe laws.
And there, we're, as far as I know, we're talking technical code, so you would have to have adequate egress and stuff.
I, I'm back to, I, I accept the road thing, so.
Well, no, I mean that from your building. So in, in building code, if you have a bedroom, you'll have to have a window that's a certain size, a certain height from the ground, so that you can use it as egress, or you have to have an exterior door to be used as egress, so you can get out in the event of a fire. That's, it does say in here that you have to have, you don't, there's no building, no room size requirements, but egress is addressed in the ordinance as it's written. It says you have to have adequate egress from each room.
So I was really particular thinking of the sprinklers, which are just ludicrous in this, along with the Kirkes. I live off the grid. We have four board members, or three board members that live off the grid, which is probably a record in the state. And as we know, that people that build off-grid that put in the sprinklers, the day the inspection's over, they turn them off because then they don't have the...
That's the capacity to operate them.
Yeah.
As far as I know, the sprinklers would not be required. That was one of the things that people were adamant about. It's like, we can't afford to build and we can't afford to put in sprinklers, and that's something that I think we should look into because $15,000 extra to put in overhead sprinklers in your house that you're gonna turn off the day you get inspected, doesn't make a lot of sense for people.
Well, and it's more than 15 for the off-grid grid, because that means you have to have 50 or 60 pounds of pressure. And I am in four houses, and I don't have one that comes close to them. Because we use gravity, and so I know people that have had to put in pumping units to get inspected, you know, and then they turn those off too.
Because you can't.
Because you're not gonna pay gas.
You can't afford that much.
Yeah.
Yeah.
To pump up your house, so... I mean, obviously, I don't wanna, I'm asking this because I don't wanna step on, you know, breaking state laws. So the fire sighting, though, we don't, did you guys talk about, it seems to me that that would be...
We didn't get into it. That's another one of those things. If you read acceptable fire sighting, which is named by name, and which is another one of those things that really frustrates me. When the state starts naming by name and brand, the acceptable sightings, solid wood is acceptable. There's, I think that we don't really need to get into it. The idea behind alternative building code is to allow people to come up with alternatives. I mean, there are things out there that people have never heard of, and there are things that building inspectors might not like the idea of. I mean, one of the big upcoming building styles right now is rammed earth. That's fairly fire-resistant, but not really known. So that, I didn't, we didn't list those out, we didn't make those requirements. I think that most homeowners who are building for themselves are going to use their own best judgment, and I think that's the way it should be.
And then last, the fire chiefs put in a letter that was pretty aggressively upset that they weren't brought into the discussion. Is, I, my question, I guess, is there other information, because this has gone on forever, so...
Yeah. I didn't, I, all along the way, I never thought that it would be, that it was a requirement to reach out to the Fire Chiefs Association. We did, gave everybody the opportunity to comment, I don't know how many different times, and they did comment. Which, bringing them in, in the writing part of it, never occurred to me because, well, quite frankly, the Fire Chiefs Association's not a legislative body. They're, the Fire Chiefs Association, they fight fires. So that just, the thought never occurred to me until we got that letter.
But they had comments previously?
No, they, we, and to my knowledge, when we brought it to one of the planning commission and all that, never had received any comments on it, until this, this letter.
So now that, now that, now that we do have comments from them, is that something that you would consider?
I don't know that, after reading their letter, I don't think that, I'd have to look it up, I don't have it right in front of me, but I, I don't think that a lot would be, I don't think there would be any benefit to taking it back and talking to them, because they raise the same concerns CalFire raises. I, quite honestly, part of the reason for this is to give people the opportunity to do stuff that's not expressly written out in code. So I don't think, I think we defeat the purpose by expressly saying this is exactly what you can do. It's called alternative building for a reason. And one of the things I brought up, I don't know if it's been seven years ago now, the greatest way to destroy innovation is to put government in charge. You will get no innovation in housing if you have only, are allowed to build exactly what the state of California says you can build, using the equipment they say you can use and the materials listed on their charts. You don't get innovation, and I think that people are smarter than we give them credit for. And the other thing behind it is, and it was brought up in public comment, one of the reasons I've been pushing for this is to allow people to build something that has a minimum standard. If you go to my district and you drive around, you will find that 90% of the houses are not even permitted, because it's impossible to build a permitted structure. So one of the driving forces behind this is to allow those people to come to a minimum standard and start paying property taxes, because those 90% of unpermitted houses are on properties that, because they're not permitted, they're not paying property taxes on a structure, and they're not paying their parcel fee for the dump, and they're, and it's, I have, I don't have anything against the people who do that, because, guess what, it's impossible to do it otherwise. So the driving force is to allow people to build, not to take control for us.
What is it that makes having a permitted structure impossible?
Cost, number one. Then, just the, I talked to a guy who finally gave up. When I started this process, I was in contact with a guy who was building a house. Owner bill permitted everything, and just the fact that he would get an inspection, the inspector would show up on Friday, he would get his inspection, he would be ready for another inspection by Monday, and have to wait until Friday for the inspector to come back. That is, when it's a full day's travel for an inspector to go to South County to make one inspection and come back, just that alone adds so much to the time of building. You're supposed to be able to build a house in 57 days, not six months or longer.
I would say it would be virtually impossible for me to rebuild one or two of my houses, just from the off-grid standpoint, location standpoint, water issues.
And that's one of the issues I have with the CalFire building, or the road standards, is there are places in my district where people, if their house burned, they would never be allowed to rebuild, because how can you bring 20-something miles of forest service road up to CalFire standard to get to your driveway? Or there are places that are only accessible by trail. I mean, there are literally houses in Trinity County that have no road to them. And that's what makes us Trinity County. So I just, I have an issue with the fact that it seems like everything that we get from the state is just making it more impossible for people who are rural to even exist. And that's, we have 280-something structures lost in the August complex. I don't know of any that have actually been rebuilt, stick-built. We've got a lot of mobile homes coming in, which aren't required to live up to the same standards as a stick-built home. They don't have sprinklers in the roof, they don't have all the other requirements, so...
Excuse me, Chairman?
Oh, Supervisor Brown, go ahead.
Oh, as I was getting my head around you, I probably should have been right here earlier. I didn't realize the sprinkler thing was so tied into this ordinance. And I have a open building permit with a sprinkler requirement, and so I need recusing myself from this item. So I'm doing that now. Sophie, do I need to disclose the actual building permit number?
Well, you're, go ahead.
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, if you have an open building permit, I don't think this would affect you that much, because you're already there. So I, if you feel...
I have future building permits also. I've got a lot of things, so I'm recusing myself. And you're doing a very good job.
All right, well, okay, if you're recusing yourself from this item, I don't know if you got the memo that we are not having closed session, so you'll be done for the day. So we'll talk to you next time.
Okay, appreciate it, thank you.
All right. So on board.
I find a couple clarifying things for you.
You have to look at the attorney, because we closed the public hearing, so this is for the board.
You can't ask him to answer a technical question, are you, though?
So one thing on the SRA, so where you're referencing, there's two different types of terms. There's SRA as far as direct protection, and that's where it determines whether the Forest Service has it or we have it. Any private land is considered SRA in the state of California, so that is the state responsibility area. So the 4290 applies to all lands, whether it's in the federal DPA or our DPA with direct protection AC. So our 4290 still encompasses the areas that are not protected by CalFire for private lands. So the new, basically what we're seeing, some of the issues is 4290 is also changing throughout the state with different code requirements. And if we're not able to enforce the 4290, then we would not be able to sign off on a house and finalize it. Therefore, we'd probably sign a letter over to the county so that they take overall responsibility for any issues with the 4290. So at that point, we would not be able to sign off on a structure that doesn't meet the road requirements, the 4290 requirements. We put that burden back on the county.
And when that burden comes back to the county, what, what does that scenario play out like?
Well, there's all sorts of things. So there's also the assembly bill, that if you sell a home in the state of California on private land, you have to have a 4291 inspection prior to or within six months of sale of the house. So we, right now, the real estate agents, most of them are starting to pick up on that. We go out and we do an inspection. Our goal is to inspect every house we can, hopefully in three to four years throughout our area. We're getting there slowly, but they have to be able to show that they pass it and go through it. Otherwise, someone's gonna be held responsible to do the clearing around the land. And they're trying to, basically the assembly bill is trying to get that done prior to a land sale or a real estate sale. So that would apply anywhere. It's not necessarily just in our responsibility or the federal responsibility, so that's one assembly bill. If we give the responsibility back to you guys, for some reason, a fire engine can't get to the house, and they want to know why. Well, we're gonna push that back to the county, and they finalized it, it didn't meet our requirements. So that's the county's burden. So if they want legal action, they'd come back to the county. So...
Could you explain, I know that you live and read these acronyms, the 4290...
So 4290, basically, the 4290 is the building construction standards. So that goes down to, when we do our inspections, it has to have a 10-foot wide road so that we can get equipment in and out of a fire engine, it has to meet certain waste standards. Bridges have to meet minimum standards. Clearance for brush around the road has to meet minimum standards. It goes down into water storage, like we talked about before. That's the 4290 portion, that's the actual building destruction. 4291 side of it, that's your clearance, that's where we push every year. You know, your 30-foot clearance around the home, down to minimal, you know, short grass, that 30 to 70-foot zone of spreading out your brush and trees, so you don't have enclosed canopy. So basically, your clearing of the vegetation around the house for defensible spaces, generally referred to as the defensible space inspection. So the 4290 is where we go down that road for enforcement to try and get that cleared out for home defense.
The first one's basically roads, the other one's...
Yeah, the first one's the construction side of it, and then the 4291 is the after-construction, and how to defend the home after that.
Okay.
So I just wanna clarify, because there's the, those two terms get very confusing when you start to talk about direct protection, SRA, versus federal, and then land ownership. Basically, any private land ownership is, falls under the SRA portion of it, and that's, goes from the Board of Forestry on their terms.
Are there any circumstances under which some of the more onerous requirements that have come down of recent, say the sprinklers in the home, or the requirement to have a car charger? I mean, that's probably not a CalFire thing.
That state building code stuff, that's CalFire, does anything to the car charging?
I just wanna ask my question. Where these more onerous codes that have come down, whether or not I have them in the right category or not, those that apply to you, you can answer my question. Is there any way that a county can say no thank you to those without consequence that you know of?
I would not, I would have to direct that to one of our building inspectors that actually do this really bad. Don't do it for the living on the inspection side, they would be able to answer that question, whether those are rare. It'd be interesting, I'm not sure how it would play out since the 4290 is a state law, how you'd get around that. Since you're now less stringent, but the state requires, most codes are allowed to be more stringent, but not less stringent. And I do know they're in revision right now, and where we come into play a lot of that is the, when you build a structure on the land, right now, you can't go within 30 feet of the parcel line without a variance, because that goes back into the 4290. How do you get defensible space around your home if you're building right against the property line? Are you gonna force your neighbor to do the clearing for you, or how are you gonna get that distance? And really, it's trying to protect it so that if we do get a wilding fire, it's not going into a structure, which then propagates the fire larger, and then it's just property loss. So with the new requirements, I haven't been able to review them. They're, it sounds like they're becoming out sooner, they're gonna be a little more in depth of what, kind of what they can do, as far as if you're building within your property line within 70 feet. You can do it with better variations, which can require some more construction styles to make it more fire-resistant. So there's, the variances is one thing, we do like to know where, you know, the parcels are, that way we can enforce the 4290. If everyone builds right next to their parcel line, or sorry, 4291, if everyone builds next to their parcel line, they have no defensible space. If the neighbor has an escape burn pile, that's a highlight, they could burn their house down. So that's where we go with that. And that's, kind of to get back to your question, I'm not exactly sure how you guys would get around loosening up the state law on building requirements.
And then I have another question for you. So a scenario that I think you mentioned in your original comments had to do with getting people out of the house, but also firefighters taking shelter inside of an evacuated home. And so, you know, I think we're all aware of a local situation, that happened locally, happened to a local person who needed that refuge, and that additional time to take that refuge in there saved quite a number of lives.
Yes.
So let's say that we were to pass this, and let's say that homes were now to be built to a standard that CalFire didn't, it wasn't to the regulations or the state regulations that you're required to enforce. And let's say that you're in that scenario where there's a home, and you're thinking we may need to take refuge in there. Do those scenarios go through your head, or do it's just an emergency situation, whatever happens, happens? In other words, does it increase liability in that emergency scenario?
So the honest answer to that, if we are driving through an area and we see a road that doesn't look adequate, we're just not gonna go down. We're not gonna check and see if there's a residence there. You know, part of this also goes down to the 4290 is address signage. If there's no address sign or anything that signifies your house, or even if you know there's a house there and the road doesn't look like it's gonna be adequate to let us safely get in and out of that area, we just won't go down it. You know, that's the honest opinion is, we'll basically go to the next one that we know we have a chance at. So we're gonna not put our personnel in safety issues. If they're driving down a road that's full of brush or overgrown trees, where it doesn't look like it's wide enough to even carry a fire engine, we're just gonna bypass that, we keep our employees safe.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So Dan, there is a state law that allows us to establish limited density rural dwellings, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so we're not superseding state laws.
No, basically, this is played right from state law. We didn't reinvent the wheel here, we just borrowed their language. The only, the only things that are strictly for us would be the zonings, and then some of the asks from the planning commission. Yeah, that would be the, basically, the only things coming straight from us.
So, and you've already said this doesn't impact any of the road issues, so...
Yeah, it's, I think that
Okay.
The road issues are road issues. I don't agree with those, but, I mean, it's, it is what it is. We've had that discussion in the past.
With all respect for the CalFire in Crocker Creek last year, we wish they would have come down our roads, as people sitting in the room can testify. Do you wanna go over the... Do you want to go over the, with the commission?
Yeah, I'm going to have to look at counsel for this, like, do we need to, do we need to... How do we do this without being considered discussion, without a motion, if we're going to go over the stuff from the Planning Commission? Or do we need to make a motion and then try to amend our motion three times before we can be done? Can we make a motion to discuss the items from the Planning Commission?
Looking at your agenda really quick. Are you wanting to take these one by one regarding the zones?
Oh, no, to the, under the three questions, the re, that. Recommendations from the Planning Commission, there's, and then we have the Planning Commission's minutes on there, and then somewhere else it was listed, the recommendations that they had for changes, and I don't... I don't...
So, the request and action is to find whether or not CEQA applies, you need to take the three different items individually.
Okay.
So the first one is find and adopt, and implement this ordinance, and find it exempt from CEQA?
No, no, he's talking about the recommendation not in discussion.
That was, there's a, because the Planning Commission did make recommendations, and I'm not sure if they're incorporated into this term.
They're on the...
I'm not sure.
...cover page.
No, that was staff, that was the staff report, what they were asking me to...
So, I would consider those technical questions.
Okay, so we can have that discussion without trying, and...
So, because my understanding is that you want to know if these things that the Planning Commission recommended are in fact included in the ordinance.
Okay, and, but then we also want to know if the board as a whole thinks that they should be included in the ordinance, and that becomes a deliberation.
Correct.
So...
So the, the technical question that you would ask is, are they in fact included? And then if they are included, then you need to go to, you know, a motion to determine whether or not you want them included or not. And somebody would make a motion, and then you can have that deliberation about, you know, approve as adopted. And then if somebody, I know you've got to go down the road of doing motions and over motions and other motions, but technically, that's the way it should be done.
Okay, and for that technical question, Ed, who would I look at? Would I look at you or look at Skylar to see if those have been incorporated?
They have not.
Okay. So... I think we're going to have to have a motion before we get deep into it, is what it sounds like.
Well, for discussion to work on this ordinance, I would make a motion to adopt this ordinance.
With or without the...
Well, as, as presented, I guess, discussion on changing the ordinance.
Alright, give me a second. I'll second it. So, and then the... The, do you want to get into the
Yeah, let's, let's step in line one by one to see if these are things that, that we feel that they should be in, so go ahead.
Does everybody have the Planning Commission's suggestions in front of them? Alright, so there, number one's under Section 215.10, definitions, add enforcement agency, to the enforcement agencies that provide a list of agencies that an individual would need to contact. Receive the permit, is that something that we didn't think is needed? Or when you contact the Building Department, they're going to hand you that?
I will say historically, that we stay very gentle in ordinances, because if we add an agency and then at a later date, some new agency comes along, then we would have to amend it. I will say that we also did not do that in cannabis, because we used the ordinances to try to be teaching tools to the cannabis growers, so that was one place that we broke that rule. But it was designed for somebody that had no experience in anything that tried to lead them down a path, so...
And then you went from, through several different agencies.
Yes, right.
So I, I personally think that if you're in contact with the Building Department, they tell you who you need to be in contact with. And they're, they're the one that boots on the ground, so I don't have a problem with leaving it as Trinity County Building Department is the enforcement agency.
So I would, just as we're kind of going through this, note how many times we lean on an enforcement agency and consider what kind of additional workload this is going to place on them as that agency.
Well, if they, if they were doing these building permits as regular building permits and not under this, they would still have to do that much work. So, the only extra work would be if people actually build more houses than not.
So if that's the case, and I mean, I have no way of comparing what goes into a normal workload and how this would differ as you see enforcement agency a lot as you read the ordinance. But realize that if that does, then when we look at fees for service, that's going to increase the cost if there's more things that are, if they become, you know, onerous on them, so just to note.
But while we're having that discussion, I, I would, I, I'm not sure if there's more or less, but we do put more expertise onto our inspectors. So, we, when we talk about owner-manufactured wood, and we say it has to be a certain quality, the inspector has never had to do that before, because they have
A stamp.
Stamped wood. So, we do have to ask them to, you know, basically look at that.
I, I'm not sure if it made it into the final draft of this, that's spelled out. Adequate says, no dry rot, no white speck, no
Right, that's in there.
Excessive scaling, so it's...
I just, I, I don't disagree with that, I'm just pointing out that maybe that's, it's going to take more time with the inspector on certain things like that, and...
It, it's possible that the inspections that are done could take longer, but there's less inspections total. So, I, I think it really, it's a wash, that wasn't any of the issues that came up when I spent two hours talking to Jim Santia ago, that wasn't, that wasn't a concern. There were other concerns, but we tried to address those the best we could.
I think we just need, I agree with Jill that we need to be mindful that if there's costs one way or the other, that we need to factor those in.
So, the next item on the still under 15010E, owner-built, the commission suggested that we add, can apply as owner-built only once every two years. That was really loud. I, I do have an issue with that, because one of the things that we were very careful to put into here this was the use for appurtenant structures. Because that's one of the, one of the biggest issues that I've heard is people, it's not necessarily building houses, it's building a chicken house or a barn or whatever. If you're limiting people to only be able to do it every two years, I, I have an issue with that. I think that it's, it's spelled out that if you use it for commercial purposes, then you have to bring it up to commercial code, and it's spelled out how that, and I'm open to changing that.
So I'm confused, are we building dwellings, or are we building chicken houses?
We're building dwellings and appurtenant structures, which, when you build a dwelling, you need appurtenant structures to go with it. So that would be, you have a house, you need also a pump house, you need a storage shed. So we're, we're allowing this code for those also.
But right now, you could build something under 1200 square feet and not need a permit, so you're...
20 square feet.
I'm sorry.
And only, only if that is only for storage. So, technically, if you build a 10-by-12 shed and you put chickens in it, you're not using it for storage. It's, it has an occupancy rating at that point, so if you want to go down that rabbit hole. That's why, that's why we put appurtenant structures in here, is because there's just, basically, California building code is onerous to anybody who wants to build in Trinity County.
So, so I have a suggestion on this one. Can, we say can't apply to owner-built dwellings once every two years? So we limit it to, for occupied homes, whatever that term is?
I, I don't know, I, I should have went and watched the, the video from the Planning Commission to see what caused this question to come up. I, I do think I, I read in the minutes that somebody was concerned that it could become like a backdoor way to develop and sell, which, like, people will find a way to cheat, no matter what, that's what Americans do. But the, one of the things we did before was added the length, added to the length of time required to live in the house before it was eligible for rent sale or any of that. That would, I think, have a better chance of stopping people from using it as a backdoor development tool than to say you can only apply it for two years. Not a hill I'm going to die on, though.
I, I would kind of agree with Supervisor Gross, I mean, I, my husband and I built a house 24 years ago. It is not something that I would want to do every two years. And so it does seem like, you know, the other piece of that that is, it's elsewhere, but it kind of relates, is this was supposed to be an owner-builder activity, but now we have, we have contractors doing it for us. So it seems like the intent is kind of getting skewed a little bit, and I lose it in there. So I think that separating them out for your appurtenant structures makes sense. And then, you know, actually, when this came up, what, a year and a half ago, the intent was, let's get some fire victims, a means to get back into a home. And so it seems like we've deviated a good bit.
When it, when it came up seven years ago, it was before we had so much fire rebuilding to do, and it was about getting people the ability to, number one, to build. And a lot of the people that were coming to me were people who have lived in Trinity County for, I don't know, since the 1800s, family-wise, I mean, they're on properties that's been in their family forever, and they want to be able to build, they can't because they can't do it. And then other people that approached me and said, yeah, I would love to be able to pay taxes on my house, but it's built to code, but that was when the code was this, and I didn't get a permit. So there are, there, this has been a process that's literally been going on for seven years. A lot of things have come into that time. Alright.
No, I, I get your point is that, yeah, if I build a house, I'm going to build a woodshed, and I don't want to have to wait two years. But I also get the point, we don't want somebody backdoor developing, because, let, let's be honest, we, we have the ability to stop somebody from getting a permit, we don't have the ability to stop them from selling it or renting it out. There's no, there's no code enforcement place that's going to go out there and say, you're renting this property out. I mean, it's Trinity County, we don't even, right now, we can't even, you know, there's people that build bunches of houses that we don't.
Most of the houses in my district are unpermitted, and...
And so, that, that's why, if we have, if we can say, whatever the legal term is, owner-built
Can apply for owner-built dwelling, only once every two years. I, like I said, that's not something that I'm stuck on, I don't think it's an issue for, I mean, the years I spent listening to people talk, I'm sure there's somebody out there that would try it, but this is a grassroots effort by people to build for themselves. And, and so I don't, right now, I don't see it as a problem, I can see that, yeah, somebody might try it. But I'm, I'm not, not really, I'm not going to, that's not a hill to die on for me. Yeah, and I, if we put that as owner-built dwelling, only once every two years, I mean, I'm, either way, I'm... No. F, rural, this one I do have some issue with, and I'm, we can discuss it, but the minimum of two and a half acres. I was hopeful to not get into any of those things, we used, tried to use zoning. The two and a half acre thing, I get it in a way, but then there's also, once again, the elephant in the room is Post Mountain. And I would love it to see a bunch of the completely unpermitted dwellings in Post Mountain have people built to this standard, would be a million times improvement. So I don't really like the idea of basically just leaving Post Mountain out. Because that's the two and a half acre minimum of wood, would leave Post Mountain out, and the R zones are all residential and all off-grid, so I think they kind of fit the definition.
So this is where your example and my example are going to crash, because the two and a half acres and unclassified, I have a real problem, because half of Trinity Center, which should be R1, is unclassified. And so people with their big fancy houses are, they'll be able, if we, the only thing keeping that from happening is that they're quarter acre lots, and it should be, should be R1, it just never was done from 1960, so...
And, I mean, this is a place where we could go straight up planning commissioner on it and, and put acre size restriction by zone.
Well...
But I don't, I don't know how, or, it, it does, okay, there was a, some language in there about people who are rebuilding and stuff, I just don't...
So this is one of my thoughts, Dan, is, is I get real tired of us treating unclassified as a zone. And
And just give list, just take unclassified out of?
Well, so what I thought was, is okay, if you're unclassified and your house burned down, that, that that's one thing, and you're just replacing what you had. But if you're unclassified and you're just building a new house, then you should rezone that to whatever it should be, first step. That's, that's where I was going with it. It just, I, I know we're going to try to fix this, and, but I, I don't want to cut out, you know, somebody that's been burned out to have to go through a rezoning process. Especially like in my district, I haven't checked all the, what happened to the 100 homes that, or 100 structures that burned out, so that's what I was thinking as an idea.
So you're, you're talking about taking unclassified out of the list of allowable zoning?
Well, taking unclassified out unless it was a burnt structure, you know, if it was destroyed by a natural disaster.
I don't know, I, most of my district is unclassified, so I think we have unclassified and ag, and unclassified was resource overlay.
But what's wrong with asking them to rezone it?
Time and money. Um, time and money. How long would it take to, for a rezone?
In, in the real, in, in the should-be world, it should be like four to six months. But in, in the world we've lived in the last five years, I'm sure there's things that have been waiting three or four years to rezone, but.
So that's a, and like, I don't know, that's, that's something that I'm, I'm not, I struggle with it because I, like I said, I hate, I, Post Mountain is, is a tough area because it's, quite frankly, it shouldn't exist the way that it does, but now we have to deal with it. And so I don't like to exclude them, I don't, um, I, I'd also, I, I would, I don't have a zoning map in front of me, but I know that a vast majority of my district's unclassified. And to ask people to wait another, um, if you want to build, wait another forty years while we figure out how to get you rezoned, I would be, I would have no problem putting a, an acreage minimum on the unclassified, even some, I gotta find it.
If, if we did that, that would keep me from jumping on the sword, that I still have this philosophical problem of treating unclassifieds.
Yeah, I, I-
And I've done it for twenty years, what's gonna happen now?
Um, I, I just have a hard, uh, I, hopefully we get to, we'll deal with some of that unclassified when we do the general plan update, but until then, I mean, we're, we're still talking years down the line. And that's something that's not the people who are living there's fault, that they're not classified. Most people don't even know what their zoning is, in my district at least.
Well, that's true everywhere, we see people that bought RR and then didn't understand what it meant, so.
So, um, I would have, I wouldn't have any problem putting restrictions on the, well, on all of them except rural residential. I think rural residential is the definition, by definition, is where this should be. I know we're gonna have issues in the future with rural residential being split up because it's so, uh, there's so many differences between an RR1 and an RR40, or RR20, but.
So you're willing to stay with the two and a half on everything but rural residential?
I just, well, or, I'm willing to stay with the two and a half on rural residential if we put in a rider that says, "Accept Post Mountain." I mean, it's like, because that, that-
Post Mountain's mainly unclassified.
Yeah, well, Post Mountain's a, a half unclassified at least.
I gotta, I gotta pause and back up a little bit.
Okay, go ahead.
So like, because what we're talking about right now are like the details and everything, and I just need to sort of pull the lens back a little bit. What, not exactly sure where to start. If you look at the surrounding counties, Mono County allowed this only on parcels greater than ten acres, and it had to be completely surrounded by federal land. So there's an example. Shasta and Humboldt Counties have recently included fire safety requirements under their basis for approval of these in recognition of increased fire risks. And if you consider, and I don't, I don't exactly know how to interpret this whole document, but I understand enough of it to be bothered by it. The ISO, the Insurance Services Office, comes and looks at the standards that we hold to in this county and what we sign off as permissible structures. And then it ends up being a rating. And so when we modify our codes, it's either gonna strengthen our rating or weaken our rating. And so if we permit things that are pulling down that rating, ultimately, on a bigger picture, we're shooting our own selves in the foot when we already are having trouble getting fire insurance and it's going up crazy. I mean, mine's really high, and I'm just happy when it arrives in the mail, at least I have one. And, and this is, this is going to have an impact on that. So with those thoughts really bothering me a lot, I'm going back now and saying, okay, what was the reason we went down this road? Because I understand people have some needs, we want to figure out how to meet those needs. I'm willing to be creative and figure it out, but like, how much am I willing to give up in order to? Not that someone's not worth it. So if we just go back, we need, we need people to have a house. If their house burnt down, we need them to have a house. We need, I, I didn't hear this before, I heard it from you for the first time today, that you want to get people into a tax bracket, you want to get them paying their, their homeowner's taxes. We want to bring current structures up to code. If they're built and they're not permitted, and they need to like have some standard to rise to. And then ultimately, we need to get people into homes more affordably. So one thought that's going through my mind is that, um, surveys going around, I remember where we were not that long ago on a meeting together, and you were talking about the concrete 3D-printed homes, and you made a statement that they're forty percent less to build those than traditional structures. Maybe we need to think outside a box of something that is fire-safe and affordable and, and kind of, I mean, you were talking about, let's, let's get creative.
Well, and that's, one of the things, okay, we're extremely rural, and especially my district and parts of Keats, well, Jeremy's now. Jeremy takes in some really rural country now. This kind of goes all the way back to the nineteen seventies hippie homesteaders movement type, where people want to do their own thing. They don't want Cal Fire to come and say, well, you have to do this. They want to be able to do their own thing. This is Trinity County, and to me, people should be allowed to take responsibility for their own actions. If, and quite frankly, if I wanted to live, I've made this argument before, if I want to live in a teepee on my own property, why should the five of us standing on this, sitting on this board and Trinity County Building Department say, you're not allowed to live in that teepee on your own property? So I can move my teepee to Main Street in San Francisco, and I'm perfectly legal. That's one of the things that is really frustrating to me. We're telling people, okay, you own this land, but you have to pay property taxes to keep it, and you have to get my permission to build on it, and you have to only build what I say you can build, and you can only do these things with the permission of all these agencies. You don't own that land. The state of California owns your land, and you only get to do what they say you can. This is a way of saying, you know what? Let people do what people need to do in Trinity County? Um, I would be, my, the, the greatest thing to me would be if we could tell people in Trinity County, okay, build whatever you want, tell us what you built, pay your property taxes. That would be the ultimate in freedom and, and personal responsibility. Make people, it says in here that you're gonna have to sign your life away, that, yeah, you know that you didn't build it to, to current code, and that if it burns down, it's your own fault. Let people take responsibility for their own action. Let's stop trying to hold their hand through everything. We cannot make people safe from themselves. And if we have enough government agencies to keep us safe from ourselves, we don't want to live here. That's just, I mean, we can go through it forever and ever and ever trying to find every little thing that could be wrong and fix every problem. It'll never happen. People are people, and we're gonna figure out a way to kill ourselves no matter what.
So I hear you.
And, what, before I quit?
Okay.
The ISO ratings, building codes are not gonna be an issue on ISO ratings. I know I spent several years on a volunteer fire department board where we spent as all of our money and everything we could to try to get an ISO rating, and we finally got an ISO rating somewhat within five miles of our firehouse. If you're with, if you're more than this far from a fire hydrant, you don't get an ISO rating.
So those ISO ratings, they go by fire district, they go by entire county? How encompassing is that rating?
Basically, you have to have somebody that can respond within so many minutes and has to be able to pump an ungodly amount of water for two hours, and if you can't do that, you don't get rated.
They, they go by district, so I, I've gone through the same thing, and we worked very hard in the Coffee Creek District to get ours down. Part of it was just that we had capabilities, we never had proved it. So within, what he's talking about, within a five-mile circle, there is a rating, and I forget what the number is, say eight. And then everybody else is the top at twelve, whatever those numbers are. I think that's accurate, but, so, so they are done by district. So, Weirville Fire District is, I'm sure, has ratings for that district. If you're out of that district-
You're, 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 ISO nine, which means you're unpermissible.
Nine, okay, nine, yeah.
Okay, so what, you know, one thing that would be important then, if that, if they go by district, is that we, we then as a board adopt something county-wide that has no impact on one district but has a detrimental impact on another district? That wouldn't be a good idea.
Yeah, I don't, um, I really don't anticipate a detrimental impact on any fire districts.
Except they, with all due respect, you can't, you can't know that.
Well, um, well, let's take, uh, well, I'm just thinking of my own fire district, which, like, there's no way we can cover the structures. Weirville Fire District, I don't know, I haven't studied Weirville Fire District, but there's probably not a lot of unclassified ag or rural residential zoning. There're probably, there're rural residential on the outskirts, but mostly filled in. So, and I don't see this as a, I'm hopeful that we would get fifteen building permits in a year, or, and most of those would be people, people applying to, for this three-year window we put in here to, you already built your house, tell us, we'll inspect it and allow you to pay taxes. Uh, I don't see, I, even if we reduce the standards to nothing, I don't see a major influx of building in Trinity County.
So I have to, I have to address a couple of your philosophies. And I appreciate where you're coming from, and I appreciate where the people that are asking for this are coming from. And I do want to find a way to meet that. But when you talk about taking personal responsibility for your own actions, and a house that the county permitted and said, this is an acceptable standard that either causes fire or propagates fire, because I pictured it more as, as causing and it's spreading into the wildland, but now I'm hearing Cal Fire saying, no, it's coming from the wildland, and your house is more prom- propagating that, if I'm using the red word, that's not taking responsibility for what can happen to your neighbor. And if we say, well, I live in my own little area, I'm an island to myself, that's great, until the edge of your island touches the edge of your neighbor's island, and then, and then that's not the case anymore. And so if you're gonna, if you're gonna choose this and live with this as your structure, your choice, whatever, then what in some way are you gonna say, Cal Fire, don't come and help me? If there's a wildfire burning through here, right, I'm, I'm opting out of your help because I'm choosing this, there's, this is the philosophy that I just am having a hard time getting behind. I hear what you're saying on government control, and I agree with you. I fully agree with you. But there also comes a point, and maybe I'm speaking as a mother of three firefighters, I, I can't get rid of that bias. I have kids that run into burning structures. And, and what that is built, what standard that is built to, I can't not picture that.
Right, well, I'm, I'm, I have somewhat of an answer for that, because it's like, if you go, we don't have to go very far, walk right across the street. What building standard is that whole section that Weirville built to? I mean, those, there's buildings that were built in the eighteen fifties that are not required to come up to today's code. Most of the houses that Weirville are built, most of the two-story houses in this town, I would bet you are balloon-framed without proper insulation. Some will probably still have fabric-wrapped wire. So you don't solve this problem by saying, okay, everybody going forward doesn't get to build anything because you can't afford it in Trinity County. And you're gonna have to spend a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to get your driveway up to code before you can even start building your house. I mean, it, there's, in Trinity County, you don't read in the newspaper about somebody's house catching on fire and burning a million acres. You read about a million acres catching on fire and burning your house. And I've watched in two thousand eleven houses burn down on earth, and I saw those same foundations in twenty twenty with houses that were built back to the latest fire code with all of the vents covered with all of the fiber cement exterior, with sprinklers inside, and they burned to a pile of ashes with nasty fiber cement board on top of it. Right next door to a trailer house that's still there, that should've burned down in two thousand eleven. So there's, you can't make yourself fireproof. I mean, we're, what, you, and what, we have to go Fahrenheit four fifty-one before we get here. So I, there has to be a, an area where it's like, we all realize, when we live in Trinity County, our house could burn down. One of the things I've said over and over, if I can build two houses for the cost of permitting and fire sprinklers, I would rather have my house burned down and be able to re, afford to rebuild than to never be able to build in the first place. I know, as a volunteer firefighter, I've been to places that are like sketchy, and you don't go in there, but also in Trinity County, I would venture to guess that ninety-something percent of the fires that people respond to that are structure-related, there is no interior attack. Because most of our fire departments, we have a whole bunch, well, they work really hard, it's really hard to make the requirement of having two in, two out with SCBA's. So the only way you're going interior is if there's, and it's immediate dangers to life and health, if there's somebody trapped in there, and then no firefighter is going to ask what code that house was built to if somebody's trapped in it. You're gonna go in. And most of the houses in Trinity County are not built to the code that's here now. I mean, there's been very little new construction in Trinity County since the eighties. And that's when all these building codes went into effect.
I, I'm enjoying the debate.
Yeah, we might have passed it.
But a, a couple of observations is that both me and Dan and, well, everybody else on the board except for Weirville, our fire departments don't save houses.
No.
They save the neighbor's house, or they, they, well, fire departments in these areas actually are ninety percent medical. But, you know, you can take Coffee Creek Volunteer Fire Department, the, the restaurant that was from here to two ninety-nine, they couldn't save because it takes them thirty-five, forty minutes to even get there. So we have a very different view of firefighting. These massive fires, um, there's nobody, in, in my experience in the fires, there's nobody, when the fires come, there's nobody standing there saving your house. Now, maybe that's just the way it is in, in the fires in my district. There's people working hard, digging in lines to keep it out of the town. There's, you know, tons of resources there, but there is not, it's very rare in this county that in my experience that somebody's actually standing there trying to save your house. You know, whatever happens, happens. But I, I think we're overlooking one thing. This ordinance is not building cardboard sheds. This is building real stick-built houses that are probably better built than a house was in nineteen seventy-five.
Probably much better built than the houses that were built in the eighteen fifties that are building, right?
So, so, you know, you're, that if you have electricity, you know, those, those things have to be looked at. There's, we're not, it's, it's the codes of how many outlets you have. it's, it's the codes of how many outlets you have, and, and that, or if you even have to have power. Or how many that, I don't know if you're even allowed to put a wood stove in anymore. Why, why you have to put in an electric heater.
When you don't have electricity.
When you don't have electricity. These are all these silliness things that I get why it fits California, but it doesn't fit a lot of us. So, I, I do take some umbrage that, that these are just shanties that are being put up. I think they're, for the most part, gonna be better than a lot of the houses that are built in these areas, especially the ones not to code.
So, there's, there's a lot of pieces in here as you go through that I wonder if there is, I mean, I read it, and I go, hmm, I wonder what that looks like. I wonder exactly what that means. I wonder how that will turn out. There was a lot of things when we built our house that we thought, "Good night, that's onerous." Until it got all done and the first storm hit, and we went, "Thank God, we put in all those brackets. I'm really glad that we did." So, you don't really know necessarily what they mean until you see it and do it. I don't have the expertise to know what each one of these pieces means. What I would feel most comfortable with, and what I would really hope, is that at the end of all of this, we could all get on the same page, and like, I know Jeremy can't be in on it now, but if we could, if we could have something that we felt so good about that we could pass four zero, I would love that. To not have to be, "Well, you know, three, two, we made our way through," or what, whatever. Is it possible, and I'm not saying send it back necessarily to the planning commission, if that's where it gets worked out. I would like to see that before this ever came to the planning commission, the building inspector, CAL FIRE, the fire chiefs, the professionals in each of the areas, the electrician, whatever, what said, "No, it's okay. We get what you're trying to do. We get the intent that we've now defined that you're going after. We understand that, and we want to help everybody feel really good about that. So, let's take it line by line." I don't feel like that's something maybe you guys do. I don't feel equal to that task, and I wonder if there's a path to kind of have that broader conversation.
Well, I, I'll tell you, I didn't go to CAL FIRE, and I didn't go to the Fire Chiefs Association, but I sat down with Environmental Health, and sat down with the Building Department, and talked to, and it's like, yeah, we don't agree on everything, but...
So, then the notes that I have here, that our building inspector created those came before or after your conversation?
Well, I don't know, before and after, probably.
After.
We weren't ready to tell this form.
And so, I feel like that's a, I feel like that's a little bit of a misstep, not one that can't be fixed. You certainly can fix it, but I get it, Dan. You want just cart blunts, and I'm uncomfortable with cart blunts.
It's not, it's not even that. It's not, it doesn't have anything to do with this ordinance even. It's the fact that I'm, we are the legislature. They are not. We make the rules. And it's like, yeah, we can go ask them, but it's, I do not feel that it's staff's job to draft legislation. That's our job. Okay, and government by expert is not how we work. Government by us is how we work. And that's, I mean, it, it doesn't, it could be for any ordinance. I mean, we didn't...
But that very, that very philosophy is exactly how we feel about state handing down legislation, that we go, "That's crazy. Who did they ask?"
Yeah, but, but it happens all the time. It's the same thing.
Do you want to do that same thing?
But, let's take another step, and we could go down this road forever. I mean, do you think that when we start making cannabis legislation, that we have to go talk to everybody that could be affected by it or any other legislation? I mean, it's like, we reach out, we allow public comment, we got public comment from the Building Department, from the Fire Department, from the Environmental Health Department. They are engaged. We didn't set, how, how are we supposed to sit down and with all these people and try to draft legislation? How do you even get everybody in the same room at once? We had our limited-density ad hoc going here. Christie did come, I believe, one time. I reached out to Jim Santiago, then we went and met at the Building Department, but they couldn't come to our meetings at the times we had them, but I can only draft Weirville so many times in a week. So, I mean, that just doesn't work. We have, we, you do what you can, and then you, you hash it out in public. And I don't, I mean, I don't know how you ever get anything done if you have to get through all that.
I, I have a suggestion to get us back on track.
That would be great.
That we go through these planning commission publicly-vetted recommendations, suggestions. We go through there and, and do that. We then, after that, we, we then take that, redo it, and then send that back out into the public for their comments on, on issues, and ask the public to bring specific issues that they have. The...
So, just for clarity, so, what, basically, what you're suggesting is we don't waive a reading, and we make this a first reading, and then bring this back at our...
No, no, that, I, I'm, I'm saying that we're gonna substantially change this enough, and I, I don't think legally that that's the case, but I think morally is that we take this back, we, we treat this as a workshop, that we've done this, added these things. Now, we send it back out to the public, and then the next meeting be the first reading. And, and then, so, to give more time to people to make substantial input. The only thing that I saw from the Planning Department was that we can't rate, or the Building Department is, we can't waive
Fire regulations.
Fire things. That's all the input that they put in that I've seen. Now, maybe other people have seen other issues, but that's what they put through in the public process. So, if there's other issues that they want to put through, then fine, or if somebody's giving you issues to bring up, great, let's, let's hash through those issues and, and do that.
So, I'm not exactly sure how public my comments went. I, I asked for comments from Building Department. Am I the only supervisor that received those comments?
Probably.
They went everywhere?
If it went in before the... The only public comment I got to blow up this big, but I did spend hours talking to...
So, I have, I have inline comments throughout the entire document. You don't have that?
We have three public comments that came into, it's in our staff report.
Okay, so, yeah, these, these did then hit the formal staff report. So, I think that taking Supervisor Grove's suggestion is a good one. That would give opportunity for all of those comments then to be seen by everybody, and I'm on board with that.
I'm still struggling after being in this process for a mere seven years, that the last minute, then there's another last-minute item, you know, that, this really...
I understand, Dan. Believe me, as being in cannabis...
For fifteen years now, and it's always a new, I mean...
And then somebody says, "Well, you've never vetted this."
It's like, yeah.
In my hundred-and-fiftieth meeting that it's been vetted. So, I feel your pain.
I, I struggle with that. I mean, somebody can make a motion. I might ask for some amendments to that motion. But I do think we need to power through the suggestions from the planning commission. And then, I don't know how we capture all those.
Suzie is capturing those.
Yeah, Suzie, are you capturing all this? It's on Zoom.
Actual changes that you have recommended? Yes, all of these questions.
Okay, so, we, we have just passed...
No.
You haven't written every comment down?
Nope.
Okay, so, we're, we just went past F. Which, did you capture anything for F? Like, adding...
All I got for F was that we were at two point five.
Two point five for everything except RR.
Well, F doesn't have anything in there. What F states in the ordinance is, "Rule, rule shall mean those unincorporated areas of the county designated as, and zoned for two-point-five acre or larger minimum." Unclassified and all that other stuff is in a completely separate section, so I was gonna stop you at some point and get some clarification there, because the definition for rule is what F is.
Yeah, which should, uh, should, uh, right, it shouldn't just be two, over two-point-five acres, 'cause I'm sure we have some, some, uh, commercials, other properties, and all else that are over two-point-five acres, so...
Well, that's because we're only defin- defining rule at F. If you go down further, where you guys were talking about unclassified ag, that's under fifteen-point-whatever chapter number this is gonna be, zero-three-zero for allowable zoning.
The timberland reserve districts.
So, that, that's the allowable zoning section. You're just essentially defining rule as parcels that are over two-point-five acres, if I'm reading this correctly. Then you go into a different, completely different section of the ordinance to determine which zones...
So, I would strike F, go to allowable zoning, and then, and go to the following zones slash parcel size.
I, I would agree with that, 'cause I don't like that definition of rule. That's not a very good definition. So, did you capture that, that we're gonna...
We're removing F entirely?
Removing F entirely, and then just add the two-point-five acres to the other zoning types besides rural residential.
So, under section fifteen-point-zero-three, whatever number it's gonna be, then zero-three-zero allowable zones. Limited-density rule dwellings are only allowed in the following zones for parcels or parcels two-point-five acres or larger with the exception of RR?
Yeah, and then...
Is that...
We're gonna have the fifteen-zero-three...
Under fifteen...
If we skip a couple here, there's, while you're still there, there's a suggestion from the planning commission to allow a TPZ zoning, which I'm okay with that, but the reason I didn't put it in the beginning was TPZ requires a conditional use permit to build a house.
Doesn't?
If I remember correctly.
I don't remember that. I thought you were allowed one.
Maybe.
Candy dandy's only one.
Yeah, I think we got that. For the TPZ, see if you can, if a house is used by that. 'Cause that was by direction to the, to council is zoning, so a lot of housing is used by right. Hey, yeah, you, do you need a CUP and TPZ?
DUP.
A DUP, okay, so it wasn't used by right, girl.
Okay.
So, that's what, but I have no, I have no problem with that. It just was not, it didn't fit what we were looking for. But you would still have to be required to direct...
Director's permit, okay.
So, I guess we, we can add TPZ.
I, I would find your TPZ.
Yeah, it's rural, extremely. All right, and then jumping back up, under fifteen-oh-two-oh issuance of a permit, the planning commission suggests that we strike the three-year period and shall be valid as long as they show active progress. I don't care either way with that. I can go with the planning commission's suggestion, but...
I'm, I'm not a fan of that one.
I, I think you can renew if you haven't got your house built for three years. I, I have no problem. I wouldn't, I wouldn't suggest we take their suggestion.
And then strike the strike.
I want to keep the strike out and...
Leave it in the ordinance.
Leave it in the ordinance and not take their suggestion, unless anybody has a reason why. Okay, and then, I don't understand this inspection request and notice, where it says the enforcement agency will instruct the owner builder, do they have contact for inspection and when? It seems like you would call the inspector and ask for an inspection, not vice versa? But I could be wrong?
Well, if you...
Let me find where that's at.
If you, leader, this would be done when you pulled your permit. They're gonna tell you, "Call the Building Department to tell them inspection." Or is this a broader, that there, that are, the Building Department's supposed to tell them to call CAL FIRE to go get their own inspector?
Well, it, it seems... I'm, I'm gonna read K real quick. "It shall be the duty of the applicant to notify the enforcement agency that the construction is ready for inspection and provide access to the premise. Inspection shall be requested by the applicant at least seventy-two hours in advance of the intended inspection. It shall be the duty of the enforcement agency to notify the applicant of the day when the inspection is to be conducted." I think that it's good enough. Unless, I mean, it says...
I, I'm fine with the way it is.
I, I do. I think it makes more sense the way it is than the way it's changed if it was, it was probably eleven by the time they did that. Okay, under fifteen-oh-four-oh regulations, or back to minimum parcel size, we've dealt with that.
Now, they're actually, they're looking for clear, is that...
Yeah, that was one of the asks of the...
We've already clarified.
Yeah, we've clarified that.
Yeah, we, we still have to strike that five.
And would this be, and I might, this might be a council for, or a question for council, but would this be where you would may also want to
Add rural resi-
That rural residential is not
Yeah, just all...
Restricted to parcels of two-point-five or larger?
Yeah, that would probably be good, just...
I'm, I'm asking, why is that even in there?
Okay.
Yeah, I, I think, yeah, just get rid of it.
Strike it internally?
Roofing, this is a issue that I don't know. I mean, the requirement for metal roofing. This is one of the... They're saying, or engineered roofing, which I have no problem with that if somebody wants to buy engineered trusses that meet the snow load, whatever.
But in J, the only, it says, "Engineered and structural analysis prepared to determine if alternate materials are allowable." And the only material you call out is metal.
Yeah, well, I think they're saying, yeah. I, I think, I think the planning commission's saying if somebody wants to have a, not, something besides a metal roof, it would have to be engineered, structural, they'd have to have an engineered structural analysis. So that they, they would have to have an engineered roof if they went away from metal, which, I mean, I don't, either way, is fine by me. I don't, I guess maybe somebody might want to have a living roof. That's a a new thing, but...
Isn't metal to do with snow sliding?
Yeah, snow slide, fire resistance, there's a lot of things that metal roofing's good for.
Right, but snow being one of them, what if it's approved for the snow load, and then you change it to something where the snow doesn't fall?
Any house has that issue.
Yeah. But the, the, this is, what they're adding in J is, if alternate to metal, if you don't want to have metal, they're saying you have to have a structural engineering, which I, I don't have a problem with that.
I don't understand why the composition of the roof changes the engineering.
Because snow doesn't slide off. Because snow doesn't slide off of it, so, but, they're saying.
That's exactly what it said.
Yeah, they're.
Change it to something.
They say if they do, you have to have.
They're adding more.
Yeah.
They're adding more to it and saying if we are going to do anything but what's stipulated in here, you're going to have an engineering structural analysis. That means you're gonna have an engineered roof. So I, I don't have a problem with it. I don't give people more options with them as the time money.
So are we adding that statement?
I, I'm.
And my question would be exactly where in J does it fit?
I'll let you figure that out.
It's yours.
No, you can just add it.
Just add it on there.
Kind of just basically what they say. After a roof, you'd say, or an engineer's structure.
Yep.
That makes sense.
If alternative materials are used, I would say instead of allowable. Sanitation facilities, add the definition of gray water using Humboldt County definition. I don't know what Humboldt County's definition is. So, um, I would say if we're going to add a definition to gray water, it would be the state definition. Not Humboldt County, Humboldt County probably plagiarized from the state. That's what people do, but, um, I would just leave, if we're, if we have, let me see where we're at here, T.
Somebody environmental health could ask.
I, yeah, we could, we could, we could ask her to step up there and, um.
My, okay.
Go ahead.
Okay, so state definition of wastewater household, uh, water, all wastewater discharged from the household with the exception of the kitchen sink and restroom, like toilet wastewater, is considered gray water. So showers, um, washing room, hand washing, all considered gray water under California state definition.
So you don't have an issue with this where it's just referencing gray water to, that means state definition trying to get that.
Correct, correct.
I don't think we need to bring Humboldt County into it. If anybody, unless everybody had a real reason. All right, so no on that one. And recording. I don't know why that's, that's already, should be in there. I don't know if it's under that section.
So it'd be under section sixteen, section seven.
Oh, six oh is. Each time a permit is issued per so that this chapter, building department shall record with the county recorder a notice, so.
So the difference is, is that the way it's written, you're noticing a quarter or so, they know how to put it on the tax rolls. The addition is, is that if somebody buys the property, that they can see that it's a K house, which I think is appropriate.
That's, yeah. And that.
To keep from getting lawsuits in the later date that somebody.
Wait. Yeah, that's. I would add that to oh six oh though, not oh seven oh, because oh seven oh is a bait for substandard buildings. Um, that's a typo, I hope.
Um, who's doing that recording? Is that gonna be the responsibility of the property owner or the county?
Um, the building department shall record with county recorder.
Okay. I thought it's what's there. I was just making sure, so the piece that you're adding.
Okay, well.
Modify. I mean, to me, they read to be essentially the same thing, statement, so I'm not really sure what, what we're adding unless it's being redundant.
Yeah, I think.
It's describing property as a class K.
Well.
Well, but the way it's written in the ordinance that's presented before them right now already states essentially describes it as class K, 'cause they're saying that
It is.
The building department shall record with the county recorder a notice that a permit has been issued pursuant to the provisions of this chapter, which is.
The difference is you're noticing a permit versus you're noticing completion of a permit.
Okay, so that was, I guess, my question then is who are we being, had, tasking with being responsible to notice the, to record and pay for the recording of the completion of the permit? Are we putting that on the building department as well when they issue a final?
Put it on the building department. They're gonna put it on the owner. So I, it would be more likely to get done if the building department did it and they're gonna pass the cost on, so.
I, I'm good with whatever you guys want. I just wanna make sure that everybody's clear and on the same page.
If that's the case, then maybe you just add applicant shall pay for the fees for the recording. That may be obvious, but.
That'd be part of the permit too.
So the real issue here is that the document is recorded within the name of the current legal owner of the property. So the fee might well be something more than just a recording fee. It might well be a fee of some kind of documental search that's done by somebody to provide information to the building department as whose name it goes in. A, a document recorded with just a legal description on it is not created public record of that. The recorder's index only alphabetical indexed by the name of the people. So if it doesn't show up in the name of the people, it doesn't get into the chain of title. So somebody's gonna need to know who the party is that's on record for that document to be noticed, and there may be a cost involved in doing that, so.
So what do you think that would be doing?
Depends on who's doing it. If it's that company, we'd probably charge four hundred bucks. Somebody else might do it for less than that, so.
That's, uh, cost to be passed on.
So it's probably a good idea to say that.
So we, I think that's all the planning commissions.
There's, there's a liability section.
Yes, well, that's, that's one.
That's section liability.
Uh, right, I thought, I thought we could put that in there. That was, that was supposed to be in there. Where's Margaret? Since that was one of the things that, um, I think we actually were planning on plagiarizing from Shasta County along with that recording section, um, of, uh, that you signed up.
Well, it's currently not. It's not in the ordinance. It's presented before you. I just did a word search for liability and nothing comes up.
So we need to.
Well, it's not, I, unless I don't understand this word, I don't think it's standing correctly. Do you say, and his officers are not reliable in injury?
Yeah, a lot of people that we had here today were in the agreement that.
And search for liability.
Exactly. Search for reliable.
So we did go to the, you're pretty much signed it up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, it, yeah, it should be, that should be in there, so I have no problem adding that, a release of liability for the county. Somebody typed that way too fast because it says our officers are not reliable in jury.
Exactly. So I don't know who to ask this question to. Council, maybe? Let's, so people, let's say that there was a situation where, um, liability is, how did it go with Cal Fire? They said they're not gonna take liability for it because it didn't get signed off on their state regulations. So they're gonna transfer that liability over to the county, but in our document, it says county's not gonna be liable for this. Who, then what? Nobody is? It's just the homeowner?
The permit.
Permittee.
The permittee.
All right. Go ahead. I, I would say that it's as good as the paper it's written on. It's not gonna stop anybody from suing you. And it may effectively limit a, a small portion of liability by saying you're not going to accept that liability, but given the state of California at the moment, I, I don't think it's actually gonna do anything for you. Thanks.
So Joe, you had issues that were brought to you that you wanna bring up, or?
Well, how are you gonna proceed? Are you just gonna make a motion and move on, or?
We've actually made a motion and got lost somewhere.
Well, I'll make a second motion, but i- is there more technical stuff you wanna go over?
We, we still, we're still going on, so.
Um, I guess first thing, I would have a technical question if I could for the building inspector. On those ISO ratings, if I'm stating that correctly, would it be true that if these types of structures were primarily built, is it district by district and you wouldn't be hurting the rating of one district if another increased in this type of dwelling?
Okay, so. I don't, we're aware, and every few years, the insurance company comes out, they grade us, the building department, they grade, they grade planning, they grade the fire department. And these are based on how do we enforce the code, what rules do we enforce? Do we have anything in our code that's different than what the state or the national codes approve? So when they look at this, anything that is less hurts us on our ratings. For instance, We Real Fire went to great extent to put in a crew quarters to raise their rating so that everybody in the We Real Fire district were able to keep insurance rates as they are. So when you enact something like this, especially since it's countywide, it hurts everybody. So. We have instances right now where people cannot sell houses because they cannot get some fire insurance. Here's a house, it's well worth the money, but because they cannot get fire insurance, lenders won't touch it. So when you have an ordinance like this that is, covers a whole county, it hurts everybody. Because the way it's worked is these things can happen here, and We Real Build, that Trinity Center, a lot of high density areas. We're not talking about just Southern Trinity. In fact, if you look at most of the ordinances other counties have, they restrict it in certain areas. They're quite restricted because of that. And then again, almost every other county that has this, have cities that are incorporated. They don't have that. So we have, but an ordinance is gonna be pretty much the whole county that can hurt everybody. It's gonna hurt property values, it hurt insurance ratings. And quite honestly, it's not gonna help our housing stock. 'Cause you're, you're advocating something that doesn't hold up very well. Now, there's stuff out there that, yeah, it's been there for a long time. But those are exceptions to the rule. We always hear about a hundred twenty year old lady drinks a fifth of whiskey and smokes a cigar every day. But is she the exception to the rule? Yeah. And that's what you're looking at. Certain houses are exceptional to the rule. Maybe they've been taken care of all these years. They took the, the pains to take the snow off the roof, or to keep it painted, or whatever, but that's not the average. The building code is really a, you know, it's a reaction to what happens. People get electrocuted, people drown, structures fail. Each thing in the building code is based on the fact that we want to keep this from happening. Fire and fires, sprinklers and new houses. They look at how many houses catch on fire. Lord knows, I, I listen to my radio all day long on my truck. They pay job for a fire, it's fifteen minutes maybe, if they're lucky, till somebody responds. That one sprinkler head's gotta save the house. Because it happens right then and there. The occupants are, they can get out of the house. These, these things aren't taught lightly. The code goes over this years and years. And I'm not saying that you can't have this in certain places, but when you have an ordinance that covers the whole county, that's not your ordinance. My recommendation is you need to sit back and look at this. Talk to your experts. Planning commission are not experts. It's obvious like what they wrote. I sat down with you for about an hour and a half after this was written.
Actually, during this writing, it's been written five times now, or six or more. And it's plagiarized from state code, so I, we didn't have to do a lot of writing.
I'm, I'm well aware of what the health and safety code is and how much they've gutted out of it. Which, that could be an issue when it goes to state approval. You have to remember, and if you read it carefully, it's really only for geographic conditions. It's not to save somebody money. It's not to make building something easier. It's just because, okay, maybe what works in LA doesn't work in Trinity Center, and that's okay. But this ordinance really needs to be reworked so that it doesn't affect everybody in the county. I looked into this for Howard Freeman, junior building unit supervisor. I talked to lenders, I talked to other building departments. Banks won't loan on it.
That's not their intention, but.
No, maybe in your mind it's not. But if somebody just lost their house, they have X amount of money and they wanna build this, they can't go to a lender. How are they gonna complete their project?
So, I, I don't know. We're kinda digressing into a, a discussion, but, um.
No, no, no. I have a feeling you're trying to push this past everybody.
Uh, no, I, the, all, to me, it's like.
And this was, this was done in a vacuum. It hasn't had planning.
Vacuum.
Uh, a director of planning.
Yeah, well, we've had three or four or seven since this started. It's not exactly a vacuum. I, Rick Tippett was the director
Yeah.
Building planning when we started, and he told me that it needed to go to the planning commission, so we took it to the planning commission, who now told us we had to take it to the board, who run us around it, pretty concerned with us for.
And if I remember right, Kim Hunter said that planning commission had no issue, had no reason to write this ordinance.
Actually, I don't know that it was Kim Hunter, but we had.
No, it was Kim Hunter.
It started under Rick Tippett, though. We're getting into an argument, which you and I have had plenty over this. But the, um, the whole thing is basically, okay, I get it that the building department, that you personally have issues with this. I don't work for the building department or Jim Santiago or Jeff Dickey. I work for the people of District Five. The people of District Five, and quite frankly, ninety, nine point nine percent of the people that come in here say, hey, yeah, this is what Trinity County wants, because.
No, I don't think so.
Uh, I've listened to a lot of public comment, and I.
No, no, you're thinking about what happens in your neighborhood.
All right, we can, we can.
You don't know the people running the.
You know, I, I'm, as, as vice chair, I'm gonna stop this. This is.
Technical, technical question.
Questions, and we're asking for your expertise, but your expertise is not about how many people in district, excuse me. It's not about how many people in District Five agree with you or him. That is not your expertise. So we have direct questions. I wanted to send this back. I would love to see your comments of how to improve this.
I sent it.
Not to me, you haven't.
I, I sent it to Zuz Suzy on September twenty eighth.
So my comments, the only comments I got were that Calif, that Trinity County can't trump state building codes.
Oh, and fire code.
Fire codes, excuse me, fire codes.
So I think that the problem here is that I asked that the building department code, uh, comments be put into the backup data and they didn't make it there.
That's, that's okay, yeah.
I'll, I'll read. Exactly. This is the only comment that I received. Fire code requirements, our, our egress sprinkler materials, these requirements should, should be included in the ordinance. You're saying K housing regulations do not change fire code requirements. That is the only suggestion that we've gotten from the.
No, I did not write that comment.
So I need to know from our planning director why I'm the only person that received the comments, then. They were forwarded to me and not.
So I need to know from our planning director why I'm the only person that received the comments, then. They were forwarded to me and not put into the backup data. Why?
That's, okay. Let me have a chance, please. I apologize. That is an oversight. I just searched through my emails and they were sent to me.
Okay.
And it was an inadvertent oversight. I sincerely apologize to staff for not getting them there. Um, there I had a few different emails coming from the department on this subject.
No.
And I, um.
Okay, fair. All good, it can be fixed.
Read them and thought some of them were the same, and I, I apologize. That, that's on me, so I.
Okay, all good, it can be fixed, but everybody does need to see those comments because they are the words from the experts and they, you really does need to read them. So I would move that.
You still had stuff that you had or you're gonna wait?
Um, what I would rather do is have everybody be able to read the comments themselves so that it can be more thoughtfully done instead of this particular moment. So I would move that this be continued to the next meeting with the building department's comments being successfully supplied to everyone.
Does Supervisor Cox, does your motion include the changes that were made to the ordinance during your guys' discussion, or just recontinued as presented originally?
We may as well capture those. You can put those into my motion as well.
I have a question before we go forward. Yeah, well, I, I would maybe be willing to second if you clarify that, and I want to know, are we moving this forward as it is written now, where we will be waiving a reading? And everything else, just moving it with those changes to our next meeting? Or do you plan on?
I never, I'm very clear on when we can waive readings and when things become first, second readings and second, first readings. I don't understand that.
So when you make significant changes, such as this, to what is presented, then you have to go back and do another first reading.
Okay, so I don't think I have a choice about that.
Well, if we could waive the reading on this time round, we should be able to waive the reading on the next time round because the significant changes we made were adopting or not the planning commission's recommendations, so.
That is a significant change to the ordinance that is presented, so I believe it still needs to have a first reading, public hearing on the, the next time you bring it back and then a second reading after that.
So maybe we don't understand that you waive the reading. Doesn't that just mean we're not gonna read the whole thing audibly? Doesn't it mean we're not going to hear it the prescribed number of times, correct?
Correct, you're going, you're going to hear it, but this is a first, first reading, so if you make significant changes, the next one cannot be a second reading because you've made significant changes. It has to be a first reading again.
I understand that.
All right.
And could you, could you just explain to everyone the term waive the reading? What does that exactly mean? It just means we're not gonna hear something read audibly out loud, is that?
We're not going to read the entire document into the record.
Right.
So, but what I'm asking is that this is going to be the same thing, only moved to the next meeting with our changes. That's what you're.
Are you saying that there's a way I could have stated that when we get further down the road?
No, I just wanted clarity.
Just thirty.
I will second if this means that the changes will be then put in the ordinance and next meeting will become the first, second, first reading.
That was my understanding of Supervisor Cox's motion.
Okay, so then I will second. And then I have discussion that pertains to this for Ed to hear. When the planning commission sends us their suggestions, and this is a new way of doing things. They didn't, they used to make decisions and send them to us and then we could change it. But when they, when they send us a list of things that, to change, then we never can have a first reading of an ordinance because we're adding things in, so my recommendation for you to look at with staff is that they make decisions and they can have a dissenting dialogue in that. But if it's three, two, and saying we want two acres, but the other two say, well, this is five acres wide, then we can decide otherwise. These become us doing these workshops and never having a first reading in an ordinance. Off my soapbox.
But, but that was a good soapbox. So, um, any further, further discussion? I do believe that, um, we've all, yeah. We can turn this conversation off, so. Any competing motions? Correct.
Supervisor Gross.
This is the first competing motion, correct?
This is Supervisor Cox's motion to continue this to the next meeting with the changes that were discussed today.
Yes.
Supervisor Cox?
Hi.
Supervisor Cohen? Chairman Frazier?
I guess so.
Thank you.
It's only been seven here. What's another month, right?
Is Jeremy's?
Jeremy recused, so I guess with that, at 1:30.